Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 2nd, 2025, meeting of the Chatham Select Board. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. Seeing none. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 28th, 2025 signing of Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 20, until June 30th, 2027, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, Xfinity Channel 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. First order of business is to establish a quorum. Ms. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Dykens?
Present.
Mr. Matters?
Present.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
And the Chair is present. We do have a long agenda tonight. We'll go into the business agenda shortly, but our first item of business is approval of two sets of minutes, the first being, these are two older sets from 2024, first being July 9th, 2024, which is a joint meeting of the Select Board and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees in part. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any corrections? I have a couple, from the board. On page six, I wish to add a sentence in the last paragraph, I'm sorry, the second to last paragraph, right at the end, after the word was, phrase was discussed, there was comment that a financial analysis should have been done, comma, and that in not accepting the Housing Assistance Corporation proposal for 36 units of ownership housing at the Main Street property, a unique, a unique opportunity was being lost. I'll repeat that. There was comment that a financial analysis should have been done, and that in not, in not accepting the Housing Assistance Corporation proposal for 36 units of ownership housing at the Main Street property, a unique opportunity was being lost. And my next is on page 11, just up at the top, the name of Mr., is it Marinie or Mariani? It's spelled two different ways. I think it was Mariani. That's it. No others will take a vote. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
And the Chair is present. We do have a long agenda tonight. We'll go into the business agenda shortly, but our first item of business is approval of two sets of minutes, the first being, these are two older sets from 2024, first being July 9th, 2024, which is a joint meeting of the Select Board and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees in part. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any corrections? We're hearing none, I'll call the roll. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Obstein.
And the Chair votes aye, that's 401. Public announcements and agenda item request. I have just really one in two parts. The Attorney General notified us on Friday, notified the town clerk that she had approved all bylaws voted at the annual town meeting in 2025, except for Article 59 related to the airport, for which she requested and town council agreed to defer with additional time for response on the 3rd of November. But included among those that were approved were two, one, which is relevant tonight when we vote on the tax committee, that has to do with participation of FinCom members on certain non-standing committees, we can talk about that later, and Article 58, that was Article 38, Article 58 of the warrant, changes to the Affordable Housing Trust Board. That was the one which limited the number of elected, I'm sorry, of Select Board members to just one, so there is a vac, there will be a vacancy, these are going to be posted by the constable tomorrow, they're not officially operative until tomorrow. I guess I wanted to throw this out, I think this is not deliberation, but procedurally, we have a vacancy on this committee, which I think we all consider is really important. Do you want to defer a discussion as to how to fill that vacancy, or do you want to just, is there any interest in just advertising to the public that if they're interested, they could apply, and do we want to establish a date? I think procedurally, we could do that tonight.
Are you talking about the taxation?
Affordable Housing Trust. That's what I meant, I'm sorry. We could defer a discussion on this until our next meeting, if you'd like. We do have some candidates that were interviewed, but were not appointed last time. If there's any interest, we could talk about it at a future meeting, but if you want to have, reach a consensus or vote on it, we'll have to defer that under the open meeting law. Stuart, you were about to say something?
I just think it might be helpful to reach out to the community and see who might be interested in serving and going through that process, if that's your question.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't know whether the sense of the board was to invite new candidates, stick with the candidates that were interviewed, do we want to put a deadline?
Can we do that tonight, though, Dean?
I sort of think this is a procedural.
I think so too, because we have to update the listing to officially have that one vacant seat available, and if you want to entertain additional applications, we can set a date, I don't know if it's.
I'd like to attain, I'd like to open it to additional applications.
Well, I also know that the committee is very anxious to move forward and get reorganized, so, but would like, so.
I'd hate to lose a week or two, and we.
If we could please put a deadline on it, then, I mean, we're meeting, technically, we have two meetings a month, but we're usually doing them, like, the first meeting of the month, so.
What would you suggest as a deadline? You're on, you're on the board.
Well, we're, we're, we're meeting tomorrow, and then we'll meet again the first Wednesday of October, so if we can get a deadline, that's, you know, prior to our, our meeting before that.
Okay.
You know, like, at least get interview and then have a vote taken within that timeframe of this month.
Corey, did you have something?
No, I was just going to say, procedurally, now that we have confirmation, I think we should open it up to, you know, to the public, I think that's the proper process to move forward, putting a date on it to move this thing forward as quick as possible is also appropriate, so.
With a vote being taken by this committee, possibly.
Yeah, depending on how many apply.
Right.
Jeff, you had something you wanted to?
No, they can't reorganize until the October meeting, so we got to, we got to get it done this month.
Well, so.
You guys, we have a meeting the 30th.
We could give people two weeks.
There you go.
September 16th is a deadline, and those who are already.
We already have candidates.
Candidates, they would be considered as well.
Right.
Okay, so let's put that on the website, and we'll announce it tonight, that anyone interested in serving on the Affordable Housing Trust, you should probably take a look at the bylaw language, just to see what qualifications folks are looking, the backgrounds that the bylaw is talking about, have to submit to the executive assistant or online by September 16th. Okay, those are my two announcements. Any other announcements from the Select Board? Any announcements? Yes, Brian Phillips. I had another one, but I'll bring it up.
Brian Phillips, 374 Orleans Road. I guess this is my first agenda request. It's about the roofing and siding on the elementary school. I've been by it, and it's in total disrepair, probably needed work about five years ago. It's not just me, I brought a roofer over there to make sure I wasn't crazy, and it's just kind of, I feel like, you know, the prevention, to do preventive maintenance on it would be much better than having to build a whole new building. Thanks.
I just wanted to mention, you know, that project is, that's been approved by the school.
Is that the elementary or?
Oh, you're saying the elementary school.
The elementary.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant the middle school.
They're built about the same time, so it's about the same, you know, thing, you see the raw.
Okay.
Right, thanks.
Thank you. Any others from the public or online? I did receive a communication in writing today from Ms. Hannah Smith, who could not be here this evening, but asked if I, I'll read the pertinent portion, she has an agenda item request. I had planned to request this issue during Agenda Items Request Period at tonight's meeting, September 2nd, but I am now unable to attend. I am requesting that the date for which the FY '26 water rates were effective, July 1st, be examined, due to the fact that residents were charged for water that was consumed prior to the July 1st increase. She does, I won't read the whole email, she does give some basis which she believes supports that request, and then she says that, this is her language, since, since the Select Board voted based on information that has turned out to be incorrect, I feel that this needs to be addressed on the, on an agenda item in the near future, especially considering many have either already paid their bills or about to pay their bills. So I want to acknowledge receipt of that request, and that will be taken into consideration. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing from Verizon on pole installations, but, and the, the butters were notified of this, but this, even though it was published, and that's why it's on the agenda, it is being withdrawn due to a need for redesign by Verizon New England, Inc. The butters have been notified of the withdrawal, so that item is withdrawn. The next item is a public hearing that the Board considers as Water and Sewer Commissioners, the request of additional sewer flow at 16 Secuance Road, West Chatham, and I'll ask the clerk to read the public hearing notice.
Water and Sewer Commissioners Public Hearing Notice. The Chatham Select Board, acting as Water and Sewer Commissioners, Commissioner and.
On Board of Trustees in part. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any corrections? I have a couple from the board. On page six, I wish to add a sentence in the last paragraph. I'm sorry, the second to last paragraph, right at the end, after the word was, phrase was discussed. There was comment that a financial analysis should have been done, comma, and that in not accepting the Housing Assistance Corporation proposal for thirty-six units of ownership housing at the Main Street property, a unique, a unique opportunity was being lost. I'll repeat that. There was comment that a financial analysis should have been done, and that in not, in not accepting the Housing Assistance Corporation proposal for thirty-six units of ownership housing at the Main Street property, a unique opportunity was being lost. And my next is on page eleven. Just up at the top, the name of Mr., is it Marini or Mariani? It's spelled two different ways. I think it was Mariani. That's it. No others? We'll take a, a vote. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
I'm abstaining.
Abstaining in the Chair vote side, so that's four zero one. The next is our, our minutes of October eighth, twenty twenty-four, also a joint meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
And, and any corrections? We're hearing none. I'll call the roll. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
I'm abstaining.
And the Chair votes aye. That's four zero one. Public announcements and agenda item request. I have just really one in two parts. The Attorney General notified us on Friday, notified the town clerk that she had approved all bylaws voted at the annual town meeting in twenty twenty-five, except for Article fifty-nine related to the airport, for which she requested and town council agreed to defer with additional time for response on the third of November. But included among those that were approved were two. One, which is relevant tonight when we vote on the tax committee. That has to do with participation of FinCom members on certain non-standing committees. We can talk about that later. And Article fifty-eight, that was Article thirty-eight, Article fifty-eight of the warrant, changes to the Affordable Housing Trust Board. That was the one which limited the number of elected, I'm sorry, of select board members to just one. So there is a vac, there will be a vacancy. These are going to be posted by the constable tomorrow. They're not officially operative until tomorrow. I guess I wanted to throw this out. I think this is not deliberation, but procedurally, we have a vacancy on this committee, which I think we all consider is really important. Do you want to defer a discussion as to how to fill that vacancy, or do you want to just, is there any interest in just advertising to the public that if they're interested, they could apply, and do we want to establish a date? I think procedurally, we could do that tonight.
Are you talking about the taxation?
The Affordable Housing Trust. Oh. That's what I meant. I'm sorry. We could defer a discussion on this until our next meeting, if you'd like. We do have some candidates that were interviewed, but were not appointed last time. If there's any interest, we could talk about it at a future meeting. But if you want to have, reach a consensus or vote on it, we'll have to defer that under the open meeting law. Stuart, you were about to say something?
I just think it might be helpful to reach out to, to the community and see who might be interested in serving and going through that process, if that's your question.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't know whether the sense of the board was to invite new candidates, stick with the candidates that were interviewed. Do we want to put a deadline?
Can we do that tonight, though, Dean?
I sort of think this is a procedural.
I think so too, because we have to update the listing to, to officially have that one vacant seat available. And if you want to entertain additional applications, we can set a date. I don't know if it's.
I'd like to attain, I'd like to open it to additional applications.
Well, I, I also know that the committee is very anxious to move forward and get reorganized, so, but would like, so.
I'd hate to lose a week or two when we.
If we could please put a deadline on it, then, I mean, we're meeting, technically, we have two meetings a month, but we're usually doing them like the first meeting of the month, so.
What would you suggest as a deadline? You're on, you're on the board.
We're, we're, we're meeting tomorrow, and then we'll meet again the first Wednesday of October. So if we can get a deadline, that's, you know, prior to our net, our meeting before that.
Okay.
You know, like, at least get interview and then have a vote taken within that timeframe of this month.
Right. Corey, did you have something?
No, I was just gonna say, procedurally, now that we have confirmation, I think we should open it up to, you know, to the public. I think that's the proper process to move forward. Putting a date on it to move this thing forward as quick as possible is also appropriate, so.
With a vote being taken by this committee, possibly.
Yeah, depending on how many apply.
Right.
Jeff, you had something you wanted to?
No, they, they can't reorganize until the October meeting, so we gotta, we gotta get it done this month.
Well, so.
You guys, we have a meeting the thirtieth.
We could give people two weeks.
There you go.
September sixteenth as a deadline. And those who are already.
We already have candidates.
And candidates, they would be considered as, as well. Okay, so let's put that on the website, and we'll announce it tonight that anyone interested in serving on the Affordable Housing Trust, you should probably take a look at the bylaw language, just to see what qualifications folks are looking, the backgrounds that the bylaw is talking about. Have to submit to the executive assistant or online by September sixteenth. Okay, those are the, my two announcements. Any other announcements from the Select Board? Any announcements? Yes, Brian Phillips. Now I had another one, but I'll bring it up.
Brian Phillips, three seventy-four Orleans Road. I guess this is my first agenda request. It's about the roofing and siding on the elementary school. I've been by it, and it's in total disrepair. Probably needed work about five years ago. It's not just me. I brought a roofer over there to make sure I wasn't crazy. And it's just kinda, I feel like, you know, the prevention, to do preventive maintenance on it would be much better than having to build a whole new building. Thanks.
I just wanted to mention, you know, that project is, has, that's been approved by the school. Oh, you're saying the elementary school?
The elementary.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I thought you meant the middle school.
They're built about the same time, so it's about the same, you know, thing. You see the raw.
Okay, okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any others from the public or online? I did receive a communication in writing today from Ms. Hannah Smith, who could not be here this evening, but asked if I, I'll, I'll read the pertinent portion. She has an agenda item request. I had, I had planned to request this issue during Agenda Items Request Period at tonight's meeting, September second, but I am now unable to attend. I am requesting that the date for which the FY twenty-six water rates were effective, July first, be examined due to the fact that residents were charged for water that was consumed prior to the July first increase. She does, I won't read the whole email. She does give some basis which she believes supports that request. And then she says that, this is her language, since, since the Select Board voted based on information that has turned out to be incorrect, I feel that this needs to be addressed on the, on an agenda item in the near future, especially considering many have either already paid their bills or about to pay their bills. So I want to acknowledge receipt of that request, and that will be taken into consideration. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing from Verizon on pole installations, but and the, the butters were notified of this, but this, even though it was published, and that's why it's on the agenda, it is being withdrawn due to a need for redesign by Verizon New England, Inc. The butters have been notified of the withdrawal, so that item is withdrawn. The next item is a public hearing that the Board Consider as Water and Sewer Commissioners, the request of additional sewer flow at sixteen Saquonset Road, West Chatham, and I'll ask the clerk to read the public hearing notice.
Water and Sewer Commissioners, Public Hearing Notice. The Chatham Select Board, acting as Water and Sewer Commissioners, Commissioners, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September second, two thousand twenty-five, at five P M. in the Town Hall Annex Large Meeting Room, two sixty-one George Ryder Road, to consider a request for increased sewer flow of nine zero seven, decimal nine, two, five gallons per day for the property located at sixteen Saquonset Road, West Chatham, to accommodate a change in use to two hundred and fifty-six square feet of retail, twelve point eight zero G P D, fifty fa, fifty fast food seats, one thousand gallons per day, for a total of one thousand zero twelve decimal eighty gallons per day. All interested parties are encouraged to attend either in person or remotely using the team's meeting link in the posted agenda.
Thank you. So we'll open the public hearing. The applicant, Dre Toey, was advised of the hearing. Is she here? I don't see her on, is she here? Dre, are you there? Ms. Toey?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, this is your application. Do you want to speak to it? I know we have the Public Works Director here as well.
Yep, nice to see you again. I'm Dre Toey. I'm the owner of sixteen Saquonset. We've been approved for change of use both by the Building Department and by Planning and Zoning, and applied to the Sewer Department, and it was, to my knowledge, that they also approved the change of use of the sewage flow, and that I'm to come before you and, for approval.
Okay.
And I think, right now, it's, it, it affects my seating. So right now, we're limited to fifteen seats within the coffeehouse and have applied for forty-nine seats.
Okay, that would be the total. Forty-nine or fifty? It says fifty on the.
Uh, forty-nine.
Okay. Those are all indoor?
Uh, yes, they are.
Okay. Rob Failey, Director of Public Works, do you want to speak to this, or what's?
Yeah, one thing I wanted to know is, oh, Rob Failey, Director of Public Works, there was a mathematical error in this memo. It should actually be, the increase in flow should be seven hundred and seven point nine two five gallons per day, so that's two hundred gallons per day less than what we showed on here, which is actually two hundred and twenty gallons less than what the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee approved, because we weren't, we didn't realize there was a change in use of the property in two thousand thirteen.
Okay.
Building Commissioner notified of that. When we made the correction, we reduced it twenty gallons instead of two hundred and twenty gallons.
So the bottom line is seven hundred and seven gallons per day?
Yeah, seven hundred and seven point nine two five gallons per day.
That's the request. Okay, and this has been recommended by the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee.
That's correct.
And, and, okay, are there any questions or comments from the board? Yes, Jeff?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion.
We're gonna, well, we have to hear from the public.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Any members of the public want to speak to this? Okay, back to you.
And I move that we support the request for sixteen Saquonset Road for an increase in sewer flow of seven hundred and seven point nine two five gallons per day.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll call the roll. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. You have it. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have the annual classification hearing under the Massachusetts General Laws for the two thousand fiscal year twenty twenty-six tax rate. And I'll ask the clerk to read the public hearing notice, and then we'll open the hearing.
Select Board Public Hearing, according to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter fifty, Section fifty of the Acts of nineteen eighty-two and Chapter ninety-one of the Acts of nineteen eighty-three, the Select Board is annually charged with determining the allocation of local property taxes by the adoption of a residential factor, open space discount, residential exemption, and/or adopting a small commercial exemption. All interested parties are encouraged to participate in person or remotely via the link in the posted agenda.
Thank you. So we'll open the hearing, and our direct, our Assistant Assessor, Candace Cook, is going to make the presentation for the Assessing Department and the Board of Assessors.
Good evening, Select Board members. As mentioned, I'm Candace Cook. I'm the Assistant Assessor, and we are here tonight, as we do every year annually, after our values are approved by the Department of Revenue, to present to you the four options for setting the tax rate. Before we get into those different options, let's discuss the values. So the Department of Revenue approved our values as of August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. As you can see in your agenda packet, we have a tentative tax rate of three dollars and sixty-seven cents for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, which is a twenty cent increase from last year, which was three dollars and forty-seven cents. Now, we have a four point three percent increase in the average of all the property values, and we can see that the values are still increasing slightly over the years. Now, you might question, why did the tax rate increase that twenty percent? Well, let me explain per our Finance Director. The tax rate reflects the amount of the revenue raised for every one thousand dollars of assessed property values. It increases when the town spends, spending needs outpace growth in overall property valuation. When appropriations such as the operating budget, debt, service, or approved articles exceeds, can be covered by new growth or other revenues, the difference must be raised through the tax rate. So for fiscal twenty twenty-six, although Chatham's total property valuation rose by four point two seven percent, authorized spending increased at a higher rate. Now, the Board of Assessors, at their meeting of August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, voted unanimously to make the following recommendation to the Select Board for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six classification hearing to be held on September second, twenty twenty-five, at five P M. On the matter of tax, classifying the tax rate, to vote a residential factor of one, so that each class maintains a hundred percent of its full value tax share, and not to shift the tax burden from the residential and open class, open space classes to the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. On the matter of the open space discount, not to grant an open space discount, which would shift the tax burden from the open space properties to the residential property class. On the matter of the residential exemption, not to grant a residential exemption, which would shift that tax burden within the residential class from residents to part-time residents. Now, on the matter of the commercial, small commercial exemption, not to grant a small business exemption, which would shift the tax burden within the commercial and industrial, personal property classes from certain small commercial properties to other commercial and industrial properties. Now, our value percentage in those classes have not changed. We're still at for a residential of ninety-four point fifty percent, and then it's going to be five point fifty percent for commercial, industrial, personal property. Now, on the four options. So your decision is whether or not to vote the residential factor of one. By doing so, that means each class remain one hundred percent of its value tax share, and not to shift that tax burden from the residential class to commercial, industrial, personal property class. On the matter of the open space discount, the town of Chatham does not have any properties classified as open space. There's only one community out of three hundred fifty-one that does have open space designation. That town is Bedford. So historically, the Chatham Conservation has handled those open space properties. So it'd have no effect if the Select Board were to vote an open space discount. On the matter of the residential exemption, now, the Select Board voted on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, to grant the residential exemption with the discount of thirty-five percent for the fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. As stated at that meeting from our Director of Assessing, Dale Kelly, or Dale Kelly, however you'd like to call her, she did note, and she's noted at previous tax classification hearing, that this does need to be voted yearly at the tax classification hearing, because it is one of your options, and also the average residential value changes yearly. Now, the residential exemption grants an exemption of the thirty-five percent of the average residential property value for all residential owners who are here year-round. Now, we do have seasonally designated communities that can go up to fifty percent. The burden basically shifts within the residential class, with the year-round residents having, paying lower taxes than the seasonally and higher-end home tax rates would increase. Now, in your packet or a handout, you should have a couple examples of those thirty-five percent of the residential exemption using that twenty twenty-six fiscal year. And then just please note that that changes yearly the average residential value. Now, on to the matter of the small commercial exemption. Well, the result of legislation that occurred in nineteen ninety-four, this exemption allows the Select Board to exempt up to ten percent of the assessed value of the commercial properties that are assessed at less than one million and occupied by businesses with less than ten employees. The weakness of this small business exemption is that it does not benefit the small businesses. In fact, it actually benefits the landlord. So in conclusion, we had our values approved by the Department of Revenue on August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. Attached in your handout, you'll see the L A four form, which indicates the total value by classes of parcels in Chatham. You'll also see the L A five, that indicates the amount of the excess levy capacity of one million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-three cents. And then lastly, is those examples of the thirty-five percent residential exemption. Any questions?
Thank you, Candace. So what we're dealing with tonight is the tax classification and these various exemptions to be considered for FY twenty twenty-six, the current tax year, as you mentioned, and as is in the memo, and as the Director noted last week, the vote that was taken last week relative to a thirty-five percent has to be voted again.
Yes.
Uh, in October of next, in September of next year.
The next type classification hearing, correct.
So I, I do have some comments or questions, and then I'll open it to the rest of the board. So my first has to do with the implement, I want to focus on the residential tax exemption, and I'm talking twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
So we've heard multiple times that, in order to implement this, there would be additional staff hiring necessary. That's certainly the opinion of the current Director of Assessing, from what I've heard. There's a potential for additional internal staff time, as well as a new employee, I guess. And town council services would be needed to evaluate
Those trusts.
various trust documents.
Absolutely.
How many trusts? We have about seven hundred or so?
I believe so, yes.
And we have thirty-three hundred potential applicants, thirty-three hundred potential properties that would have to be, that would be
Usability.
candidates for this exemption. But there's also an additional feature of implementation that I think gets lost in the shuffle, and frankly, I didn't understand it until I had further conversation with the Assessing Department over the past week, and that has to do with the overlay. So can you explain what the overlay is in general? How it relates to the residential tax exemption? And then I want to ask you about a particular town on the Cape.
So just for a definition, on the overlay account, is the municipal finance account designated to fund abatements and exemptions of committed real and personal property taxes for any fiscal year. So what can happen is, is we're telling you that we're going to be raising this amount of money to be paid for those real estate taxes, and now we're going to take in consideration that those exemptions are going to reduce that amount. So it's important that we have a substantial amount on our overlay.
We have overlay every year. It's part of the budget, which is about seven hundred thousand dollars.
Yep.
And that's used to pay for abatements.
Our current exemptions that we have are statutory exemptions, which is our seniors, our blinds.
Yeah.
And then also any other real estate or personal property abatements, motor vehicles. So those are already taken care of with that.
That's part of the budget that the town manager presents, that the Select Board recommends to town meeting, and the town meeting approves, and for which taxes are raised to pay. Okay.
No, actually, that's, that's not the case. No, we don't, we don't present a budget for overlay. It's something that the Assessor, the Board of Assessors determines. And if there's a certain amount that the assessors are comfortable with, we would transfer that to either stabilization or O P E B. So we don't use it to balance our operating budget.
There's no taxation on that?
I guess.
Does it factor into the tax rate?
It's our Finance Director, Carrie Mazuril.
Sorry, Carrie Mazuril, Finance Director. The overlay is actually calculated after we do the tax rate. It just comes in and flows in as a calculation based on what we have for figures in there. So typically, it's around, I'll say like two hundred thousand dollars or two fifty that we get on our overlay. And right now, in our overlay, we have a balance of around seven hundred and fifty thousand from previous years that we haven't used. So each year, the town of Chatham votes to take out a hundred and fifty thousand of that overlay to use towards, O P E B is usually what we use it towards.
But, but to pay, forget about the residential tax exemption, to pay for abatements.
Yep.
Currently, that comes out of overlay.
That comes up.
Isn't that tax money? Was it raised by taxation at some point?
I don't, I don't. It is, is, okay, it is, it's part of the tax rate recap, but it's not, it's like a calculation that comes in from it.
Well, what I'm trying to establish is whether the more money you put in overlay, the more the tax burden is on the public.
We can't put more money into it than what was calculated by the Department of Revenue. So it's a calculation that they determine.
Does it have? You have to come to the mic.
Okay.
It would increase currently. That calculation that the assessors put together would increase for that fiscal year of twenty-seven, which could be outstanding, depending if people file late. It usually occurs most often when the overlays have to go up when the towns are not quarterly, because it's just the timing of an exemption. So our bills get set in September and October, and they have the right under the law to file until April. So that's why I was saying prior to this, that the campaign to get out there in January and let people know they should file early before April, so we can get them on that first half and not have to do an abatement. Obviously, the second year, you know, right now, like, say, with the seniors and the veterans, we have you on a schedule. We get you in early. We send you out applications early, so that doesn't happen and affect the overlay as much as it could.
Who determines the amount of overlay?
Well, it's, it's our usage from prior years, as well as what is outstanding. So what I mean, what's outstanding, it could be, you know, receivables are involved in that, outstanding receivables, as well as abatements. Right now, we have two appellate tax board cases outstanding. We have to account for those with the Department of Revenue. So we, that would show up in that fiscal year in FY twenty-seven. And we, they would, like I was saying earlier to someone, Eastham and Orleans, who are currently going in at five percent, are looking to increase their overlays at five percent, anywhere from two to three hundred thousand dollars, just at the five, just to give you an idea what other towns are looking at.
Who makes that determination here? The town manager, the Finance Director, the Director of Assessing, the Board of Assessors? Who makes the determination of how much you're going to put in the overlay?
Well, that'll be, again, we'll, we'll put in what we think, you know, depending on, you know, even like Eastham at that two to three hundred was based on fifty percent of people being late. That's what they were basing it on. I'm hoping if you have a really good campaign and you're out there and telling the people about it, that it's going to be a lot less than that, maybe twenty-five percent.
We have seven hundred thousand to play around with right now. How is that added to?
How, what do you mean? How is that added?
If you use a hundred and fifty thousand of the seven hundred thousand for O P E B, now you're down to five, five fifty. What if you, what if the determination is made that you need one million dollars for overlay to cover this residential tax?
It'll be made in that tax year of fiscal year twenty-seven.
Where's that money coming from?
That will be a good question.
What's the source of the funds, Dale? He's trying to get at, so are we taxing in order to get an overlay, or is that something that comes off of our formula?
So that is a part of the budgeting process. So you would have to.
If you don't have enough money.
Yeah, you would have to increase, yeah.
You'd have to raise taxes.
That I would have to look at in a little bit more detail, how it affects it. Yes, I would assume that that would affect, because, yes.
The town of Wellfleet, for five percent exemption, not thirty-five percent, and has a hundred, has approximately a thousand properties eligible. Put in, what, for overlay, a million dollars?
I'm not sure. Did you, oh. I don't know if she quoted us what she put in her overlay of Wellfleet. I don't think Nancy did.
Well, I just, I just raise this as, as a consideration that's going to have to be taken into account, because we have thirty-three hundred properties.
Yes.
And we have only seven hundred thousand in overlay. Maybe that's going to be enough. Maybe people will apply on time. I wanted to ask about the town of Nantucket. Candace. So they adopted So they adopted the residential tax exemption in 1981. They've had it in place for 44 years.
Correct. I actually have an email from our Director, the Director of Assessing, Rob Rainey, and I'll read exactly what he said. He said, "Nantucket adopted the residential exemption in 1981 or 1982, which was shortly after the state enacted the provision in 1979. I don't have good legible records from 1980s, but from the 1990s began with a split at 10% year-round and 90% seasonally. Or at least that was what was based on the residential exemption as a percentage of the total residential parcels. By the 2000, the year-round portion grew to about 20% year-round and 80% seasonally, and has remained more or less consistent with that up today. And then with 2025 being at 21% year-round and 79% seasonal."
So by that information, when you consider that one of the arguments put in favor of, put forward in favor of residential tax exemption is that it's going to make it possible, easier for people to remain in ownership of their homes and perhaps even attract people to be able to buy homes. But in the Town of Nantucket, they started out in 1981. And in the 1990s, because you didn't have records going, or information going back prior to the 90s, it was the split between seasonal residence and year-round was 80, it was 90-10.
90-10, yep.
And now it's in the early 20s.
Yeah, 21-79.
It's 80-20. So in, what do you want to say, 15, 20 years? It's gone down one notch.
Correct.
I think that's instructive. I want to have one final point. I got an email last week from someone who thanked me for my vote last week in opposition to 2027. And this was from a seasonal resident who has a house, and I went and looked on the assessing records. It's valued by the assessors at $1 million. If we were to implement a 35% exemption in 2026, how much additional tax approximately is that person going to have to pay? I know you gave us an example for.
Yeah. So the 1 million, we don't have it exactly at 1 million, but to give you a rough estimate, if the assessment was $1,642,816, you'd get that reduction, as you can see in the packet, of $574,986. So that means that the non-qualified taxpayer would pay $1,001,001 less in taxes, excuse me, more in taxes. And the qualified taxpayer would pay $1,395 less. So it would be probably less than $1,000 for the.
So the fellow who has the house, who's not year-round, it's valued at $1 million, is going to pay something under $1,000 additional tax.
Presumably, yeah.
Maybe $100, I don't know. I asked you to calculate the discount that a year-round resident would pay if their house were valued at $2.5 million. Because you can get the discount all the way up to, the exemption all the way up to 3.6, whatever it is. Again, we're talking 2026.
Correct.
And you say that the qualified taxpayer pays $820 less.
Correct.
And whether they need it or not. Because this is not a need-based system.
Correct. Everybody gets it, correct.
Okay, so I guess, I just want to say rhetorically, does any of this make any sense? I think not. I think as an elected member of this board, my responsibility is to represent everybody in this town, whether they voted for me or not, whether they are voters or not, whether they own a home or not, whether they are year-round homeowners or seasonal residents and taxpayers. And I think sound tax policy should be premised on real numbers and empirical data. I don't think you make tax policy on a lick and a prayer. Town meeting has rejected the residential tax exemption twice, so has the Finance Committee, I think unanimously. And I continue to believe that the residential tax exemption is a bad idea. And I intend to vote to honor the recommendation of the Board of Assessors in full tonight. Those are my comments. Are there any other comments from the board? This is a public hearing. Any comments from the public? Elaine Gibbs.
Yes, thank you. I think I had two questions. One was, my understanding is it would be kind of automatic, but you've also talked about filing your tax returns early. So what kind of financial information? What are you looking for from the IRS? And, I mean, do we submit that kind of data to you?
So yes, the information we would be looking for would be your both federal and state tax returns to prove, you know, residency. And then we would need an application be filled out. But all that information would have to be determined by the new assessor how they want to implement that.
So even though it's automatic, if we choose not to send in our tax return.
It's not automatic. You'd have to apply for either an application to prove that you're residents, you're residency.
So what do you do with those tax returns? Are they always on file in a computer somewhere?
No, that would be something that you would have to provide to us in that first initial year.
When I send it to you, what do you do with it? Is it there on the computer forever?
Oh, no, no, no. We would make sure, as with any of our confidential information, that they are stored in a proper place. Like we have other exemptions, that we have confidential information. It's not open to the public.
Is it returned back to them or remain in the system?
That, again, would have to be with the determination of if they want to do that, the new assessor, if they wanted to. Those are all questions that I have to.
Am I correct? Isn't it Department of Revenue guidelines that you have to get that information?
We do need to get it, yes, to prove residency.
Okay, I'm sorry, Elaine, I intervened, but go ahead.
That's all right. I can't remember. I had a second question, but it's escaped me at this point. Oh, yeah, you know, I don't know how you're going to manage this. There are some, a lot of sophisticated financial planning and estate planning that goes on. You're going to have a lot of blind trusts. And you may find the person applying, you know, maybe somebody who's got a life estate or whatever. I mean, there are so many possibilities. Who's going to review those and determine the ownership?
Well, that's why we said we would definitely need another position in addition to having town council review those documents, because that's a little bit above our privy if you're dealing with trust documents, because one of the requirements is you have to be not only a trustee, but also a beneficiary. And we would have to review those documents, you know, thoroughly to make sure that they would apply, be eligible under the trust docs.
See, I can't imagine how you can even administrate something like that with 3,300 properties and go through that and make the right determination in case there's an error, you know, and then the owner beneficiary finds out that Grandma applied for it and actually, it's not her house. Those are my concerns with that kind of financial information and personal information being recorded somewhere. But those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Any other comments from the public? Okay, I see none. So we'll, can we go back to the board, please? Yes, thank you. Thank you, Dean, for recognizing me. With the tax returns submitted, is the financial information redacted? Are you just looking for the actual?
Oh, yes, redacted.
Okay.
We're just going to mostly.
So let's be clear here. We're not, everybody's not giving their tax returns with numbers. You're looking for the address on that tax return.
Correct, just like we would with our.
And to another earlier, another earlier point, Candace, you've done a very, very professional job this evening. I'm delighted to meet you and hear you speak. You did a very good job. And I will look forward to continuing to working with you. But another point, the financial information is redacted. And it is going to be noisy in year one. We know that. And we've known that for decades, that it's going to be noisy year one. We're going to need additional resources. We've been told by other towns on the Cape, P-Town and others, that Welfley, that they've added staff. And we'll do that. We'll add staff to get it done. But this board, four to one, decided that it was a significant enough number for year-round residents to save them money so that they can exist in this town. This board heard them. And we've been hearing this for years. And I voted for years to not have a residential tax exemption. And you know what? Again, I voted for it this year. It's time. It's time we gave the locals a break. And, you know, I quite don't understand where the chairman was coming from this evening. But this vote's voted, this board has voted for the RTE a year hence. Not this year, but a year hence. I want to be real clear, real clear, okay? We'll keep it at one for a dollar this year, but next year, we did, we voted for it. And we're going to implement it. And if it's noisy, it's going to be, it's going to be a little noisy. But we'll get there. Other towns have done it. And Chatham can do it too. Thank you.
And just to clarify.
Any other comments from the board?
One thing, just to make sure that you're aware, just to revote it at that time again, because it is part of your four options.
We'll have to revote it next year in September.
It'll have to be voted.
Yeah, we will.
And people can change their minds, too. But I would point out what's on the agenda tonight is 2026, including the residential tax exemption. So that's why I'm talking about it tonight.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm ready for a motion. If anyone has a motion to offer. There is a recommendation from the Board of Assessors. I'll read that again. I think it's in the packet. There it is. The Board of Assessors recommended on August 28, 2025, that the Town of Chatham continue all tax classes of property at a single rate and to reject the Open Space Discount Residential and Small Commercial Exemptions for fiscal year 2026. Is there a motion to support that recommendation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We'll call the roll. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Candace. Nice job. Next, we have public comments on the business agenda. I'll go over the business agenda very briefly. We have a proclamation for suicide prevention, awareness, and acceptance of a shellfish donation, request to use town property by the Police Department, approval of the final version of a conservation restriction that we've already endorsed, a review of the draft requests for proposals for affordable and attainable housing development at Stepping Stones Road. And the public comment will be accepted contemporaneously with that one. Review of the expired town council contract. Discussion on returning to a weekly meeting schedule starting September 9. And consider amending the Select Board meeting participation policy. And we'll have public comment contemporaneously accepted on that. And we have several committee appointments. So I will ask at this time, are there any public comments on the business agenda? None in person, none online? We'll proceed then. First is to consider a proclamation of Suicide Prevention Awareness Month 2025. And we have invited.
Mr. Chair, we have Mara Weir, and she's with us remotely.
Okay, she's from the Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Council. Mara, can you address this, please?
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me. My name's Mara Weir, Dr. Mara Weir. I am the, one of the co-chairs of the Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Coalition. Each year, we send out proclamations to all towns in Barnesville County to help us recognize Suicide Prevention Month, which is in September. I don't know if you want me to read the whole proclamation or just explain a little bit about why we do it. But I did want to be here today because I've been with the Coalition for a long time now. And as you know, suicide is a concern of ours on the Cape and Islands. And each town has their own rates. But Barnesville County as a whole is 1.5 times higher than the rest of the state. That is concerning for us.
Yeah, I think it probably would make sense, ordinarily would have the clerk read it. But since it does lay out the rationale for this, I'm going to ask you if you would read it with the whereas's and the conclusion, and then we can consider taking a vote on it. Doctor.
Okay, me, sir, doctor, okay, yep. So it just says, whereas, with September being recognized as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, the Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Coalition invites our communities, mental health advocates, prevention organizations, survivors, and allies to join us in helping to de-stigmatize mental health and take proactive action towards suicide prevention. We seek to raise awareness and visibility of mental health and suicide prevention resources in our communities and help connect individuals with the appropriate support services. Also, whereas, according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, suicide is the second-leading cause of death among individuals between 10 and 34, with around 48,000 people dying annually in the U.S. That works out, whereas, to about an average of 132 suicides each day. And each one of those suicides impact at least 100 individuals. That includes friends, service members, family, social media connections, neighbors. And so we know a significant number of these individuals have been impacted by suicide. So whereas, Barnesville County's suicide rate is 1.5 times higher, standing at 14.2 per 100,000 versus the rest of the state of Massachusetts. They're at 9.5 per 100,000. We recognize the need to create hope through action here locally. So whereas, the Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Coalition works hard to spread the word about prevention, awareness, education, and action. I would ask the Town of Chatham to consider putting their full support behind those of us that work in the field of mental health, education, and law enforcement. And we would encourage all residents to take time to understand their mental health through education and recognize that we need to take care of our mental health while we take care of each other.
Thank you. So there is a resolve that the Select Board hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Chatham. Is there a motion for that effect?
Mr. Chairman, I move to proclaim the month of September 2025 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the town of Chatham, Massachusetts. This is a vote we think we've taken annually for quite some time.
Yes, is there a second?
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. I will call the roll. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. It is adopted. We will sign it and post it, and thank you, Doctor, for your good work.
Thank you. May I make one more comment, please?
Pardon me?
One more comment?
Can I make one more comment?
Yes, yes.
On September 12th, at Cape Cod Community College, we're having our Annual Suicide Prevention Summit. We have internationally world-renowned speakers coming. If any and all of the people of Chatham would like to come, I can send out the flyer, but it's at Cape Cod Community College, September 12th, and we have some great speakers lined up, so come out and learn about suicide and how to help in your neighborhood.
Thank you. I think we do have the flyer attached to our materials, but public has heard you.
Super.
Public has heard you.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Next item on the agenda is to consider the acceptance of a shellfish seed donation from the Chatham Shellfish Company, and I'll call on Renee Gagné, our Shellfish Constable.
Good evening, and I'm here tonight, oh, Renee Gagné, Shellfish Constable. I'm here tonight to see if you would graciously accept a donation from the Chatham Shellfish Company, and that is Stephen Wright and John Richards of 17, approximately 17,000 oysters for next year's harvest.
Okay. Any comments or motion?
I have.
Yes, Jeff.
Well, how many of the 17,000 survived? Do we have any?
We have excellent survival rates with our oysters. They get fairly, to a very good size before we sink them over winter, and I would think that the mortality is maybe 1%. I mean, we really have great survival rate with our oysters. They're hardy.
You're sinking an oyster river, Renee?
Right off the swimming beach of Oyster Pond. Oh, should I not say that?
No.
Yes, Jeff.
I think it's great, and they've done this for a few years now.
Every year, we get a gracious donation from them.
Yes, great.
Are you going to offer a motion, Mr. Dykens?
I recommend the Select Board vote in favor of accepting donated seed oysters from the Chatham Shellfish Company.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Renee. Next, consider request to use town property. Chatham Police Montemoy Regional Middle School Back-to-School Party at Harding's Beach, Friday, September 5th, 2025, and we have representative from the Police Department.
We have Chaparralas, and then we have the Chief, Mike Anderson, also online.
I, Charlie Chaparralas, Student Resource Officer of the town of Chatham. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Board members.
Thank you for coming on. So this is something you've done in the past?
Yes, it is.
And I'm certainly supportive. I suspect all my colleagues are. Is there any questions from the Board or comments or motion or whatever? Corey Matters?
I'll just offer a motion if you don't mind.
Yep.
All right. I move to approve the use of town property at Harding's Beach on Friday, September 5th, 2025, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the annual Montemoy Regional Middle School Back-to-School Party.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Officer. Congratulations on your new job.
Mr. Chair, are you taking public comments on the ones that we're not supposed to speak to during the agenda item?
I'm a little confused because I did offer public comment for the non-contemporaneous ones. Did you want to comment on one we've already voted for or what?
No, we're coming up, but I didn't realize you were, I thought we were just talking about that one particular item, so I have two that I just wanted to comment on.
And those are the ones, those are the ones that say public comment will be accepted, namely the Stepping Stones Road and the public participation policy? Is that what you wanted to talk to?
No, it was on the summer calendar and the Town Council's contract, which you don't have for public comment.
No, but I did invite comment earlier. I didn't hear you, I didn't see your hand raised at that point. Which ones did you want to talk about? The Town Council contract, and I'll accept the comments at this time.
Okay, I really apologize. I didn't realize that. Yes, in terms of the Town Council's contract, it was signed June 27, 2024, and it does state that reappointment annually acting by and through the Select Board, so I would hope that you would do that. A vote should be taken by you. As an aside, in reading the packet, I noticed that we were asking Town Council for his opinion on his own contract, which I think is a little odd, and he did say, I'd be happy to sign a multiple-year contract and would do so tomorrow, but you wouldn't have to keep me around for that time. I would urge you to keep it as the contract states, annual reappointment, because I think history shows that once we have contractual commitments, they are less likely to be revisited. And then on the summer calendar...
Before you go into the second one, the reason I asked him the question, I wasn't asking for him to opine on his own contract, I wanted to him to explain what he was referring to in one of the sentences in the contract. I didn't know what was behind it. That's all. Go ahead, please.
And the other is the summer calendar. You know, October 15th is the summer. I think it results in long agendas. The meetings, as we move forward, every other week tend to be two to three hours with 15 to 20 agenda items, and as of October 22nd, that's last year when you had the Budget Summit, and once that starts, it's, you know, a full calendar with upwards of 207 documents or pages in the packets all the way through March when we close the warrant. So I would hope that you would go back to full-time on September 9th as requested. Thank you.
All right, Elaine, thank you. Okay, we'll resume with the next business agenda item, which is to consider the vote to approve the final version of a conservation restriction for Chatham Drinking Water Well 10, and to vote to authorize the Chair to act as dual representative of both the Select Board and the Water and Sewer Commissioners in signing the conservation restriction for Chatham Drinking Water Well 10. This is essentially a pro forma bureaucratic thing because the state apparently wants us to take certain votes. We've already approved this. Mr. Fairley, Director of Public Works, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I do apologize. I thought we were closer to the finish line last time, but here we are again. Really, it comes down to two issues. One, the original vote the Select Board had taken was on March 4th, 2024, prior to the finalization of the conservation easement, so they want an updated vote on that. There were some changes, they were very minor, they were almost grammatical in nature, so we didn't bring it back to the Board for the vote because it really didn't change the language or the intent of the contract, of the conservation restriction, I'm sorry. And then finally was the Select Board Chair was signing on behalf of both the Select Board and the Water and Sewer Commissioners, and even though our Town Charter indicates that he can do that, that the Select Board can vote, can sign as the Water and Sewer Commissioner, but it's unclear that what authority the Chair has to sign on behalf of both, the full Board, both committees. So it's just another formality to try to clear this up.
Okay, so there are two motions, and Mr. Dykens is going to offer them.
With a drumroll, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the final conservation restriction document as presented, and also, I move to authorize the Chair of the Select Board to act as a dual representative for both the Select Board and the Water and Sewer Commission in signing the conservation restriction. Amen.
Is there a second to these? There's a second. I will call the roll. I will say that when it comes time for the Chair to sign, I'm going to follow the pattern of my fellow Quincyite who was born in Quincy, John Hancock, and write a big DPN on there. I'll call the roll. Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob. Next is a review of the draft requests for proposals, the RFP for Affordable and Attainable Housing Development at Stepping Stones Road. This was an agenda item requested by Board Member Davis and by Chatham resident Carolyn McClellan. We will accept public comment on this item as well. Our presenter will be Gloria McPherson, our Director of Housing and Sustainability. Welcome, Gloria.
Good evening, and thank you. I'll do a brief review of the agenda report. Back at the end of 2024, the Select Board had asked the Affordable Housing Trust to take a first stab at developing a draft RFP for the Stepping Stones Road property. We actually started with Town Council, who took the Main Street RFP draft, not draft, the actual proposal. She went through, she edited a few things, added a few things. We used that as the base for the Stepping Stones Road RFP, and through several meetings of back-and-forth discussion with the Affordable Housing Trust, they developed and voted to submit to the Select Board the draft that you have in front of you today. You might notice that there are some highlighted sections in the draft RFP. Some of those, as they relate to dates and things like that, are for me, so that I know when we issue it, those are the places that I need to fill in with the date so that we make certain deadlines. But other things are kind of those decision points that you can look at to craft the RFP in a way that you would like to see it. Right now, it's asking for ownership housing, it's requiring 25% affordable units, which would be required under a 40B to get the density that, you know, we want, because anything over, I think it's four units, will require a 40B. So 25% have to be affordable. The other 75% are in here, being asked for, being a range of attainable units from 90% to 200% AMI. And then there are various other things highlighted that talk about, you know, the building type, the development style, public open space, like those kinds of things that you can choose to ask a developer to provide or not, if it's not one of your priorities. And I think that if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, I have some questions and comments, but I'm going to defer until I've heard from others. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, you mentioned that timing is your deal, but if we need a vote at town meeting, can we back up from when we'd like some votes at town meeting and then back up to when the RFP is, you think is going to just be distributed and what the response, the time and the responses would be expected, and so if we have an ask from the town, we're prepared.
So the ask from the town would be supplemental funds, probably from the short-term rental tax special revenue account, and we won't know how much money we'll need until we actually get proposals in. So there's no town meeting vote required to actually issue the RFP and get proposals. It's once we get proposals in and you evaluate them, and if they have an ask for a certain amount of money to cover that gap for the attainable units, that's when you would go to town meeting.
So are we targeting next May?
That would be a really ambitious schedule, but I think it's within the realm of possibility.
That's kind of what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, Gloria, what's the duration, so that if we put, or the timing for the RFP, do we usually have it out for 30 days or is it?
It has to be a minimum of 30 days at the central register. So we usually issue it like the week before it goes in the central register, so typically we'll have it out for like five weeks minimum, but the last two RFPs that were issued, we actually had them out for six weeks, and I did hear a little bit from developers saying that that was kind of a tight schedule and that eight weeks would be ideal. So I would say that there's the central register requirement, but realistically, we should plan on six to eight weeks having the RFPs out. And I think that, I think the evaluation this time around will probably be like more streamlined because everyone's already gone through the process already. So I think that whereas we spent, I don't know how many, we spent at least a month doing evaluations, I think that realistically, if we get proposals in and if I, you know, do a summary sheet for all of them, we can probably review them fairly quickly.
And I think, if you don't mind...
Yeah, I'll have others, but go ahead.
That would involve the Town Manager naming a review committee, I think, outside that would be representative of the Select Board, hopefully a member of the Affordable Housing Trust and, you know, at-large members to look at the RFPs and then bring...
Last time she had both boards in full, but thinking it could be something smaller.
Smaller and more in her, yeah, as the, yeah.
So I'd actually like to see the evaluation committee nominated before the RFP is issued so we could ask for the appropriate number of copies of the proposal, which we did not have last time.
Corey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, it is clear this entire Board recognizes the need for housing. No arguments there, and we know homeownership is a desired offering. There's a lot of support for that. The one thing that I think we always get a lot of focus on, and I'd like to have a little bit of discussion on, is the appropriate of density. Density is always like the tricky word. It's the one thing that kind of, you know, pushes people one way or another, because we did come up with some test fits, and we had some preliminary, you know, concept of what we might be doing with the property, and this 12 to 20 that is highlighted here seems a little bit higher than what I remember. So you want to speak to that and kind of just see where we landed here?
So the Trust, you know, considered the test fits that were done. I think that the most number of units on the test fits was 10. There were some parameters put on those test fits that we don't necessarily want to impose on a developer, so we asked for either single-family or duplex units, each on its individual lot, which is going to give you, you know, fewer units overall. So we felt like that was probably potentially the lower end of it. How we went up to 20 units, I can't really say, but that was what was voted on, but you'll notice that that's highlighted in here as something that you can discuss and scale back if you see fit.
Okay, thank you.
Stuart, did you have anything at this point? I have some, but I'll wait until you're...
Well, I guess my comment goes, and thank you for meeting last week or the week, whenever we met, you were very helpful. You know, density is, to follow up on Corey's comments, density is a hot-button issue, and it's kind of rearing its head in both projects in West Chatham and South Chatham, so I have real concern about the density of this project and the effect on the neighborhood, and somewhat new to this process, Gloria, have we, the town, done any sort of meetings or outreach with the folks in the area to get input? Will that come later?
I think that would, I think that would probably come during, I mean, it would come later. I can't imagine putting it out there to the general public, saying, how do you, what do you think we should do for an RFP when people typically don't have that kind of expertise? And I have to say, as someone who's actually done private sector land development in the Amherst-Hampton area, I've never approached a parcel and said, what do I think is the ideal density for this? I mean, there are so many factors that influence the number of units that can be built on a property. It could be the topography, it could be wetlands, it could be the shape of the parcel, like a nice square parcel like the Main Street property, much easier to get units on than a piece like Stepping Stones Road, for instance. So I think that a few of you have asked me, and I've given my opinion, so I think it's unrealistic that anyone's going to get 20 units on this site. When I look at this parcel, it's an odd shape, right? Because the corners, because of the arch, the corners go down to points, which is, you know, undevelopable land. There's a steep slope in the back that leads to the rail trails, so you have to offset buildings off of that a little bit. It's long and thin, but you can't have a number of curb cuts going out onto Stepping Stones Road. It's just, you know, potentially dangerous. So that's part of the reason that the test fits had that kind of circular common driveway, that individual driveways were off. So when you think about the undevelopable, really narrow portion of the site at either end, when you think of the undevelopable steep slope in the back, when you think about the undevelopable portion between the common drive and the street, because it actually is a pretty, pretty narrow, close-to-the-road common drive, it's not like you're putting, it's not like you'd ever have room to put units on both sides of that. When you think about that undevelopable part, it really does reduce, and I'm not going to say the word density because we're just looking at the number of units. It's really going to reduce the number of units that you could physically fit on the site. I mean, you could overcome that by putting, you know, an apartment building, but if you look at the draft in front of you, that's not anything that the Affordable Housing Trust proposed, and it's not anything that would make sense in a neighborhood. That said, the neighborhood has really small, small lots, you know? It's a fairly dense neighborhood across the street.
Well, I'm just trying to avoid where, you know, where some of us find ourselves in these two projects that are ongoing, and I think 20 for two acres is far too dense. I use the word density because that's what I am familiar with. So I'm not going to support the density of this if we want to scale that back to something that's more appropriate for, what I believe for the neighborhood. I'm very happy to see that we're going with homeownership. That's very, I think, the right direction, but I think it's too many, too many units on this piece of property.
Thank you. I'm just going to offer a couple of comments with respect to the homeownership. I'm happy that this is homeownership-directed, and because the homeownership option was, with respect to the previous RFPs on the two properties that are currently in front of the zoning board, really was a secondary consideration. It was in the RFPs, but that's not your doing, that's what effectively the Trust recommended to us at the time. I did go back and look, and I remember distinctly, there were two presentations regarding the test fits by UTIL. One was in December at the Select Board, and it says, there was also a November 6 meeting. I'm not sure that's the correct date, I couldn't find that, but I did find the information. It looks like the number of units that we were looking at was something in the order of eight to 12. It wasn't 12 to 20, and I don't know where I come down on the number of units. I hear two of my colleagues expressing some concern about that. I don't know whether that's too much, 12 to 20 is too much or not enough. I guess I'm just, I'm not puzzled, but, you know, this was referred to the AHT on a split vote, and now there's a provision in the RFP that says, basically, discard, discount the UTIL test fit scenarios regarding the parameters, they're no longer requirements, and that's what came back to us. I assume, and I respect the work of the Trust, I assume they discussed this, looked at the property, looked at the topography and all the considerations that you just articulated, Gloria, and that's what they came up with, but that's what we have in front of us. As I recall, in the RFPs for Main Street and Meeting House Road, there was no upper limit recited?
We just had a minimum.
That was talked about, but there was none ultimately put, so this one does have an upper limit, and I think that's probably helpful. There's talk here about local preference. If you go 40B, you can get up to, what, 70% local preference if the state approves it?
You can get 70% local preference of the 40B units, of the 80% AMI and below, so 25% of the units on the site can have a 70% local preference.
What about the attainable units?
Nope.
We can't have any kind of discrimination, I guess, in housing laws?
I think that with seasonal communities coming out, we could do something where we, you know, target some for teachers or, you know, municipal employees.
Those categories.
Like, we haven't gotten our final guidance on that, so I'm not really sure how... Like, we haven't gotten our final guidance on that, so I'm not really sure how all that's going to fall out. But I think it's possible that we can wrap some of that into.
Okay. The reason to go 40B is to what, be able to tap into the AHT fund monies for the?
No. So the reason to go 40B is because that parcel would only allow like four units without a 40B to override the, the density requirements under zoning.
Okay. See if I have anything else here.
But it doesn't hurt to tap into the Affordable Housing Trust.
Well, yeah. And with respect to Jeff's initial question, going to town meeting, that's for money.
Right, it would be. It would be, so the trust funds can be used for anything, for all of the 80% units. And when I say used, it would be to close a gap for the developer. So we're not going to, we're not going to pay $650,000 per unit. We're going to have the developer build it, know that they're going to get some money back, and we're going to close that gap between what they could get and what they, you know, can sell it for affordably. So the Affordable Housing Trust funds could cover all of those 25% units at 80% AMI and below. It could also cover any units up to 100% AMI. And then between 100 and 200%, that's when you have to potentially use the attainable housing funds.
Okay. This goes out to qualified developers. Who determines the qualifications?
The, the evaluation committee.
Okay.
I mean, and if you look in the evaluation criteria, which is attachment A, it talks about, you know, X number of projects at this scale, working with municipalities.
Yes, it's the same, essentially the same criteria we looked at last time.
Yeah.
I mean, you tailored it a little bit to this particular project. Okay. If there are no more questions from the board at the present time.
I have some comments.
Yeah, go ahead, Shereen, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I want to speak to the 1220 density. I think it was to provide a better opportunity for people to look at the project. And then seeing it, I think, as Gloria had explained, the topography would probably limit that, but it would not dis-limit, you know, an opportunity. And the reason for density is about, is somewhat about the financing aspect of a project, too. But it also, we are getting, if we're talking about density, it's, you know, in that particular neighborhood where there are, are all the houses on this Heritage Lane and, and the other, they're all in very small lots, so it's, it's very fitting. And the townhouse design is a nice design. I, I think I've seen several examples in other towns and communities, particularly I saw one in Plymouth, that were duplex townhouses that were really quite charming and fitting for, for the town. There's the cost-effectiveness to everything, too, to have it a little more dense. So I, I'm not, I'm not as concerned, but I get it. 20, I, I feel was, it was brought up by one of the members who felt that we should maximize as much opportunity as a group, you know, as, on a project as possible, to get the most that we can out of what we're trying to do for the community. That, that being said, you know, I'd really hate to see this be really scaled down to next to nothing because I think that that would, it just, it wouldn't be a useful piece of the property.
Can I ask you a conceptual question or to Gloria? Because I did read in here, the options for the design included the phrase stacked flats. In order to get 20 units, is the only way you can get that with a stacked flat? Or do you think you, did you consider, the trust board consider reaching 20 units with these other options like townhouses and?
So we didn't, we didn't drill down on actual building styles and how many units could be, could, could fit in. I think part of the reason we mentioned stacked flats is because stacked flats and townhouses, even though one has units that are vertical and the other has units that are horizontal, basically look the same, and both of those building types could be designed in a way that can be compatible with Chatham-style architecture. It wasn't a question of how many units can we pack in? I mean, if you want a lot of units, then ask for more one bedrooms, for instance. That's a good way to, to up your unit count. I mean, everything is, everything is so constrained on this site. If I were doing this just myself, I would put a minimum number and I would, I would let a developer just come back and show us what they, what they can do.
Okay. Shereen, did you have anything more?
No.
Okay. Carolyn, did you, McClellan, you were one of the requesters of, sponsors of this article, this item.
Can I ask Gloria a question?
Yes, please.
All right. What, what would that minimum number be, Gloria?
I mean, I think, so I think 10 is a really reasonable minimum number because I think it's likely that we'll get more than 10. And I don't think I'd want less than 10. And we know that we can get 10 based on those UTIL plans. And like I said, if you took away the constraints that we put on UTIL, which was individual lots, I think that they could get a couple more. I think that realistically, you're talking 10, 12 units. I mean, I can't imagine more than 12 or 13, but who knows? I mean, I don't know what kind of clever solution a developer could come up with, especially if they're small units.
Just for, just quick clarification, under current zoning, we could do four units on that parcel, correct?
I mean, technically, you'd have to rezone it to something, not municipal first, but in keeping with the neighborhood, yes, you would be able to get four.
So eight units would be twice the density, 12 units would be three times the density. Just trying to put in perspective what we're talking about potentially. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything more, Shereen?
No.
Okay. Carolyn?
Carolyn McClellan, South Chatham. Yes. So just in speaking to, obviously, we want you folks to move forward and get this in motion, and the questions you have about the density. I obviously, I appreciate Gloria's opinion about a minimum and then leaving it open, but I understand not everybody's agreeable to that. My, my comments about density would also be to not get so hung up on the actual number of units, but consider the massing. And you could have a building that could be a, a small two-bedroom and a one-bedroom, and it might just look like a, you know, a small house. So the number of units in and of itself doesn't mean that the site's overburdened. But if you look at the massing of the buildings, the styles of the buildings, that's more a concern than the actual number of units, especially when we're trying to do some smaller units in addition to the traditional size units. So the number of bedrooms will, will completely change the size of each unit. But I just, I, I think 20 would be, I mean, we have to go back, we have, no matter what we decide, you folks decide, and what we get on RFP, who answers on RFP, we have to go to town meeting to get them to give us the money. So it has to be something palatable for the entirety of the town. So let's, you know, keeping that in mind, we need to be realistic as to what, what it can look like and make sure we deliver the best aesthetically pleasing property without overburdening the site.
That's a, if I could interrupt, that's a very interesting point. Because if we would put out this RFP and, and a developer is selected with a particular proposal, by the time we go to town meeting, will we have at that point already signed a land disposition agreement? Or will town meeting be able to say, we think this is too many units, we're not going to pay for all of those, and we want this reduced?
That's what I was trying to get. That's an excellent question, and I'm not sure.
I, I think we would have to go to town meeting.
I would hope it would go first to town meeting.
We would, and so the LDA would be contingent, just like we've done with other purchase and sale agreements, that is contingent on a town meeting vote, Eldridge Garage, the same type of thing.
So we wouldn't be obligated to the developer's original plan if town meeting decides it's too much for them to accept.
Yeah. One of the things about a project like this is that there is a lot more flexibility to potentially decrease the number. So we're not in that position for Main Street and Meeting House Road when their funding is so tied up with low-income housing tax credits. So there's going to be nothing like that with this. So if you guys remember the HAC proposal, it was 36 units, and they had offered to phase it so that we could get money at different, you know, at different times. And the other thing that they offered to do was reduce the number so that the total input from the town was less. They didn't propose fewer than 36 units because that was the minimum, but it was a possibility that they would be open to reducing the number because that would obviously reduce the amount of money that the town would have to put in. Because there would be some sort of, you know, average cost that we would be buying down for each of those attainable units, which would be more for 10 units than it would be for six, for instance. So I think that if you do want to entertain something like that, where you potentially reduce the number, like, this is the project where it could actually happen.
Is there, when we talked about the previous projects, you mentioned some limited funding available from the state. I've forgotten what the program is called, Commonwealth Works or something like that?
There, yeah, there's the, yeah, there's actually Commonwealth Works that is funded. But there's ARPA, not ARPA funds anymore, but home funds and what's the workforce housing funds? Also whether it's recapitalized.
There might be some potential funding even for the attainable?
Yeah.
I heard on, for what it's worth, I heard today on the news that the president is going to declare a housing crisis.
Interesting.
And presumably come up with a program for increased housing opportunities around the country. Maybe there'll be some federal money, who knows?
Well, hopefully it's better than opportunism zones.
Carolyn, go ahead.
Yeah, just one more point I'd like to make.
Sorry for interrupting.
No worries. Just to be cognizant of the AMI distribution that you were going to have, we didn't get any 80% AMI on any of the projects we've done. So I'm really hoping that we do that on this, so that we got the four houses. I'd love for them to be at that 80%. And also be aware that if you do the hundred, if you do a number at 100%, which I sincerely hope you also do, that that can be funded through the Housing Trust money because the Housing Trust can go up to 100%. It won't be part of our SHI, but it would be the 100%. So just be aware of that. That's an opportunity to use. We generally have more trust funds than we have the other funds.
Okay. Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you.
If there are any comments, Jeff? Yeah, I just want to get back to the notion of for the, for the attainable units. Are earmarking them for police, fire, teachers, et cetera? Now, talk to us about that, Gloria, please.
So that was part of the benefit of the town adopting the seasonal communities designation at town meeting. It gives us the ability to, for year-round and attainable housing, to actually target towards certain groups. So municipal employees, and it specifically talks about like DPW, teachers, EMTs. It talks about artists, writers, and other creatives that are important for the economy. And if you remember, we did a home rule petition for commercial fishermen, too.
Yes. I mean, that's, that's extremely exciting to me, to be able to turn around and offer that to municipal employees and our, and our, it would just be really, it would be great. That's really, you know, it's what we want, big time. Excited about the ownership model. We, we, you know, as we discussed, the rental units at both Meeting House and Main Street, you know, we always said, I always said, we always said that there'd be opportunities for ownership going forward, and hopefully we can get a flag in the ground for ownership here with a piece for affordable as well. My earlier question about, about town meeting was just concern about, you know, the ask and getting it, getting it to a mature offering that we can put our, we can put a price tag to and go to town meeting in a cogent way and get it approved and get it, and get it going. Comment, comment on the, on the neighborhood. It is a neighborhood of small lots. It is all up and down, across the street and the north and, north, east and west. And of course, there's a cemetery across the street and a school, you know, to the north, or to the northwest. So I think it's a, it's a great spot. I, I think it's a good idea to go for a minimum. I would do 12 as a minimum. I only, I throw it out there, just 12 as a minimum.
That's what it says, isn't it?
It says 12. Yeah, and then, and then see what, what creative, as you noted, Gloria, what creative developers might come up with for, for increased numbers. When we talk about increased density or increased numbers, and they're going to go to municipal employees, I get more excited about the number of folks, the increase in the number of folks who can actually house there. So it's kind of where I land. That's pretty exciting.
Are you opposed to the 20 cap?
And I think, I, you know, I'm not a developer, but, you know, you did, but, but that's okay. I mean, we've heard, we've heard that 20 is pretty high, including Shereen. So, I mean, if someone can do 20 there and do it tastefully and we can, you know, and house municipal employees there, I'm psyched. I think it'd be great.
I think it gives a level of creativity and options for people to come with much better design choices.
You're on the, you're on the trust, so I assume you, you're okay with the 12 to 20?
12 to 20.
Yeah, I'm okay with the 12 to 20. I'm okay with the, you know, like a recommendation of a minimum.
Okay. Stuart?
Well, you, you mentioned, Dean, I wasn't here, but the number eight.
Yeah, we had, we had a couple of presentations by the consultant that came in first. We had some revisions. Some of it had to do with the roadway and the driveways. And, and then I think Gloria came back. I don't think they were there the second time, maybe they were. And we talked about it again, and then the trust came and asked us to refer this to them. That was the last time this board heard of it.
And what, what size are the lots in that area? Are they? Well? I think they're quarter acre inherited, I mean, that.
Yeah.
We said they're comparable, but I, I, I don't know that because I don't know what size lots they are. They are relatively small, but they could be some a third.
Maybe 20,000 square feet.
So 20,000?
10.
20,000 is going to be closer to half.
Yeah.
Yeah, half acre. So it's, it's more like?
10, 12.
15 would be a third, so.
The non-conforming.
Yeah.
Yeah, pre-existing.
So I'm, I'm just concerned about overwhelming this property, although I'm certainly, you know, want to have my cake and eat it, too, where we want to, I want to, I want to be able to accommodate the local folks first. And what's the best way to go about that?
Oh, you're asking me. I mean, the best way is to put out an RFP like this and to actually, you know, put a minimum, maybe put a maximum, too, and just, you know, during the vetting process, like, look for, maybe, maybe we can do more of like a workshop where we talk about all of these highlighted things and we talk about, you know, the massing of the buildings like Carolyn was talking about, and talk about specifically, like, keeping the scale of the building small, but, but increasing the density in a sensitive way, something like that. I mean, honestly, not that I want to, like, hark back to something that's already been done, but like, we could, we could have used those design guidelines from 127 Old Harbor Road for this, too, like, if we had gotten that. Because the whole point of those guidelines was to, like, establish, like, how big can a building be before you have to start breaking it down so that it looks like small buildings? Like, those are the kinds of things that you want to bake into an RFP so that a developer knows what we're looking for. We're not looking for a big apartment block. We're looking for, you know, buildings that look little and look cute and, you know, are small and, and fit in with the neighborhood because the neighborhood's not big. Even though, even though those lots are bigger than what you're going to get here, it still has a scale that needs to be respected. So I think that maybe, maybe if you guys want, we can either run through it today or maybe have another meeting where it's more of a, of a workshop, where we go over all of the highlighted areas and we start thinking about what we want this to look like and what you put in the RFP.
I, I think that that would be helpful. I know it would be to me. And I think it would be helpful to the community and to the neighborhood if we had a better understanding of, I mean, I like when I hear we're trying to accommodate our local fishermen and our, our arts people and the people who work here in the, in the government. So I think we, from my perspective, I think it would be helpful to flush that out a little bit further and better understand, sorry, the density. And this, you know, when I, when I initially see, being a layman, you know, 12 to 20 on two acres of property, that says it's going to be overwhelmed to me. And I, so if we're going to be at eight, that makes me more comfortable, and then we maybe don't have a limit or have a lower limit. But it would help, I think, universally, if we had a workshop like you're suggesting, and we can flush these details out so we don't get so far down the road that we're going to lose control of this.
Corey?
Well, no, just to, just to kind of move the conversation along, because we do have this, the element of town meeting, I think we've kind of discussed that 20 is a little bit high. I'm definitely on the lower end of things, you know, if, if, you know, we're allowed to, in theory, allowed to build four without zoning now, twice the density would be eight. If I threw a range of eight to 16, that gives us a very broad, in my opinion, window. I, I'm not really warm and fuzzy about the 16. Eight to 12 is probably more my, where I'm landing, but for just, just moving this forward, would eight to 16 be a number that the board would be considered to throw out there, or are we?
I mean.
Because I mean, 16 is four times the potential density, which I think is far too much.
Right.
Just for the conversation, you know, I don't know. I'm trying to play the middle man right now.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would advocate for a, a, a lower number. I think 16 is, is still too high, but to move the conversation forward, I could put that.
I just want you to go back to some of the conversations that were here earlier about the density issue.
It's really not about the number. It will end up being about the design and the opportunity for how many bedrooms will be into the units. So I don't want to see this group get bogged down on density. It's a bad word, obviously. It's a hot-button word. But I think that the, if we are, if we're considering a different number, and I'm open to that, if that's the way it goes, I thought the minimum might work best. And then I think that we can see some really good things coming our way. The more restrictive you put on an RFP, the harder it is for the creativity and the opportunity to come through. Doesn't have to accept it if it's too dense. But, you know, we could definitely, would be able to see models that are creative and, you know, will provide the opportunity we want, or the success we want out of this project.
Corey.
No, I agree, and that's kind of where I threw the 16 number out, is it's kind of higher than, you know, if we just look at it strictly density for now, units. It gives me some room for the architect to, you know, draft something that might be more palatable, just to be a number slightly higher than what I'm really thinking right now, but giving them a little bit of extra room to grow and present as something. Because right now, a hard 16, I'd say no to, but I'm giving them some growing space to see what they could do creatively, so.
I have a, did you want to say something? Yeah, I understand what we're trying to get to here, but I do appreciate Shereen's comments and Gloria's as well. And I would go, I would go 12 to 16, but I don't think we want to hamstring a potential developer. I get the 20 seems tight, and again, I'm not a developer, but I also don't want to lose sight of the potential opportunity here. And I also don't want to hamstring or put constraints around the creativity of potential developers. I just, I think we'd be shooting ourselves in the foot. We want to create housing here. Now, it could be done really tastefully and still get 12 units, maybe even 16 units, but you could house a whole bunch of people. So, I mean, I think we want a decent balance, and I think 12 to 16 probably gets it done for this group.
Corey, I wanted to ask you about a workshop. So if we did a workshop, how does that affect the timeline here? That would be done before the RFP is issued, is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, that would be you guys sitting down and going over this line by line with me and making sure.
I wouldn't favor that kind of workshop.
So all of those, all of the highlighted things that I put in there, that's, that was basically me saying, give me your guidance for that. Do you want to change that? These were the sections that the Affordable Housing Trust discussed. Those were the things that were kind of up for debate. So have the debate. I mean, if you're not, if you're not fully prepared to have the debate tonight, we can do it, you know, next week or something. Or maybe you're okay.
I honestly don't want a delay.
Please let me.
I don't want a delay.
I'm not up for a workshop that's gonna go through this line by line. I mean, I think it's incumbent upon us, it's our responsibility to go through this document. I did. I can point out a place where a period is missing. That's the level of detail I undertook on this. But, you know, I thought we were perhaps talking about a workshop where we would talk about potential design, but how can we do that without a consultant present? We have the old designs, right, that were done by Utah. I mean, that kind, I thought that's the kind of workshop that Stuart was talking about. I mean, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I misunderstood.
No, I mean.
So I would say, if you go to page six, for instance, in the center of that page is a highlighted section. And it says, "The Town of Chatham encourages the following."
Oh, good.
Multiple buildings which could be of similar or various sizes, native landscaping, outdoor private space for each dwelling unit, and ample interior. Like, those are the kinds of things that you can ask for. And then the other place where you can see a lot of those kinds of details, if you go to Attachment A, which is the evaluation criteria, there are sections that talk about building design, you know, site design. Look at site design, thoughtful and efficient site design, of course. Carb cuts are minimized, new landscaping, designated area for snow. If you look at building design, buildings can be all one type or a range of single families, duplexes, townhouses, and stacked flats. Is that what you guys want? Or do you want all single fam-? Like, this is why I highlighted this. These were the things for you to consider. And these are the sections of this RFP that are gonna shape the responses that you get.
Well, I personally have no issues with what's in here. I mean, I could even live with the 12 to 20 as something that is put out. That doesn't necessarily mean that's what we're gonna recommend at town meeting. But I'm not seeing the benefit of a workshop that's just gonna go over the document. We could either take a vote on the document tonight, or, and I'll say for, I will say, I think we're giving this document more vetting than I felt we had on the previous documents at this select board. But anyway, that's just a cheap political comment on my part. One last comment from the board, and then I'm gonna go to public comment. It's Jeff, that's you.
Yeah, I do have a question about one of the yellow highlighted areas that you highlighted on page seven. It's about sewer. So the western part of this property is, could already be, could already use gravity? Is the way I read this?
Perhaps.
Okay, perhaps, okay. So if I'm a respondent to this RFP, what do I assume about searing this area? Am I responsible for the cost of sewer tie-in? Or is that the town's responsibility? Or is that subject to negotiation going forward?
So the site as it is has a high point and a low point. The high point is by an existing sewer. The sewer invert is fairly deep, so it would allow a certain portion of that site to potentially gravity feed into it. That would be on the developer to pay for that. That sewer manhole can absolutely not service the entire site. So there's a couple of different ways you can handle it. You can pump the lower portion of the site up to the sewer manhole, or you can wait till the sewer comes around in like four or five years, and you can do a phased development. But any pump that would have, that would happen would be the responsibility of the developer. I don't know whether it makes more sense to have individual E1s in the basements of every unit, or if it makes sense to build a small pump station on site, which is something that the Affordable Housing Trust, you know, pondered as a solution to this. So, yeah, that's why I highlighted it, just because that's a, that's a very different situation than our other two properties, which have sewer right there. And it's a, it's a development constraint right now.
Just one other comment.
I'd just say those pump stations can run a million bucks apiece.
Well, I mean, this would be a pump station for maybe six houses or something. It wouldn't be like a.
An overarching comment here, I'm very comfortable with this RFP. It's well crafted, the criteria is well done, and I think we ought to move forward as quickly as we possibly.
I just had one question before I go to the public. On page four, up at the top, it says, "All costs and expenses of developing the property, including without limitation the cost of permitting and improvements, and leasing to tenants shall be the sole responsibility of the successful proposer." Is that consistent with the town going to town meeting and requesting some subsidy money?
What paragraph is that?
It's way up at the top, it's the first full sentence. All costs and.
Yeah, I think the leasing to the tenants, it might be just a carryover from the other.
Yeah, we can, I can add something in here about the town understanding. Well, also, there should be a section in here about.
There are sections dealing, if there is language dealing with the town subsidizing, I just wondered if there was some internal inconsistency.
Yeah, there might be, actually. I appreciate you pointing that out.
Otherwise, I do agree with Jeff. I think you've done a good job putting this together. Yes.
When you're ready.
I'm done.
Yeah, okay. So we talked about, I think you mentioned, Gloria, that the buildings would, you know, fit the character of the community. Would that not go on page six in the middle where you have highlighted?
We can add that over there. It's in the evaluation criteria, but we could definitely add something about that, that it's really important that the, you know, Chatham character be maintained.
She's saying she could add that.
Yeah, sure. And as far as, I just want to harp back to, because I'm not sure I'm clear on it, on the use, being able to, I'll use the word favor, but we're trying to help the local community here that works here. And where is that in here that will be, will be, you know, there again, that's a bad word, favoring. How do we get to, how do we get to accomplish that?
So that would be something that I wouldn't necessarily feel comfortable putting it into, we get actual guidance about seasonal communities. The draft guidance is supposed to come out sometime in September. I literally check every day, so far it's not out, even though it's only September 2nd. So it might make sense, and I know you guys are on like a timeframe for.
I'm not on a timeframe.
So I'm not either, actually, because there's sewer issues and, you know, other things. And you can always, you can always have a special town meeting.
Right.
A fall town meeting. But, yeah, it would be, it would be good to put something about that desire in here. I'm not sure how it might influence the design of the buildings, but it might, knowing that it's gonna be going for, you know, town employees or something. Maybe they'll have other considerations. And maybe we can do kind of a very general blanket statement, something, something just like, you know, per seasonal communities, we're gonna be pursuing this, without fully understanding.
Subject to guidance.
Yeah, exactly.
Something like that.
Yeah, it seems to me that the seasonal communities explanation is coming quickly, in that we're in September and we expect it to arrive in September. And I think that that's a big component to this project and others. And I'd like to be able to understand what we're able to do using that seasonal communities designation here. And I think we'd get, you know, we'd just get a whole lot more support if we were to do that.
I think, I would suggest you could put some language in that says it is the intention, or however you want to phrase it, of the town to provide preference to these various categories under the Seasonal Communities Act, subject to guidance from the State Department of.
I would feel comfortable with that.
Something like that.
I think that's great.
That way, we wouldn't have to delay anything, but we, the proposers would be on notice that that's what we want to do.
Yeah, if you think that that's gonna satisfy that, if I were a proposer, I, that's kind of a.
I hear you.
You know?
Yeah, I just wanted to, since you were not part of the original.
Right.
Reviews that we all participated in on the other properties. The way these evaluation criteria work, the committee will be appointed by the town manager, and then Gloria gave us these charts and matrices, and we each independently have one another went through these criteria and rated them, and then they were, that's what this is all about.
Okay.
It's a scoring system.
And then that went to the town manager, who makes, made the decision as the chief procurement officer of the town on a recommendation from both boards at that time. That's how that process worked for the.
Yeah, I don't know whether, I may be uncomfortable with that. I don't know who, what's the criteria by which this committee is appointed?
I think, if I remember right, and Jill, you can, I think town council advised us that the town manager made the decision.
It's, yeah, it's under, it's under Chapter 30B procurement that the chief procurement officer, which is the town manager, will designate a committee for evaluation.
But he recommended at the time, I think it was Mr. Costello, that, maybe it was Tallaman, Mr. Tallaman, that both boards should endure, should make a recommendation to the town manager, and that's what happened last time on Meeting House and Main Street, right?
After review. After the review, after the scoring matrix.
Yes, yes. And they took two separate votes.
Yeah, because there wasn't a. It wasn't a review. Subcommittee that was making a recommendation.
Yes, you officially designated that as the review committee at the time.
Yeah, for timing, and we had to, yeah.
Okay. All right.
I don't.
Go ahead, Stuart.
Let me, let me just, so town council has said that, under the Procurement Act, that the committee, committees are appointed by this board, that committee is going to, yes, they are. Committees are appointed by the town manager?
Yeah, there's certain working groups, like the Parking Solutions Working Group, COA.
We talked about a committee, that's where I.
That's a term that's used in the law, it's a committee. How are the board wants to decide so that would help you be comfortable with the decision? And then we can move forward. I don't, I don't really.
Without a committee?
I could do it without a committee. I have normally done, like with the COA projects, the Wells 10 and 11, used an internal staff review, and then we made our recommendations to the select board.
Oh, yeah, and that, you know, those technical types, I can understand. But this is beyond technical. It's a very sensitive community issue. And I want the process to be, you know, something that the community is involved with. And since we represent the community, I thought that the board would be more involved in this. That being said, you know, I guess.
Are you done, Stuart?
Yeah, for now.
I'm sorry, Shereen.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm sure that town manager, you know, has heard our feelings. She's heard my feelings about who I'd like to see on the review committee. And, you know, that we can have representation from the community. You know, I don't, and from the select board, if that's something that she decides. But I, I think that this is, this committee should be people, you know, should be a representation of the community, but also a representation of expertise when it comes to housing projects as well. Maybe it's somebody from the planning board, you know?
Okay, all right. Public comment.
Mr. Phillips.
All right. Ryan Phillips, 374 Orleans Road. I was really hoping you guys could explore the opportunity of tiny houses.
What?
Tiny houses.
Okay.
For one, they're all gonna be inherently affordable, whereas the kind of project for the RFP you're talking about right now, where it sounds like it's gonna be 25% affordable and, you know, 80% whatever market value. So these are gonna be, no?
No, they're not gonna be market value, would they be?
No, we're gonna do a project that's 25% affordable and 75% attainable.
Okay, attainable. So, but if you crunch the numbers, I believe these units are gonna be much, much more cost-effective. I think a lot of them, they're prefabs, they just come and drop them off. I think it'd be easier to create, you know, higher density with these units and allow for more, you know, green space and trees and that type of stuff. And then, is there anything else? I was standing there for a long time. Oh, yeah, I read something that Maura Healey is gonna be doing, or giving away $60 billion, I think it's 60. It was either 30 or 60 million or billion, but I'm pretty sure it was $60 billion. So I think for projects like that, for the seasonal communities, so if, you know, if she's gonna be promoting it with all that type of money, I think we should seriously consider it, you know? And it's, I think they have, you know, lower impact environment. I think there's a lot of good things to look into about these tiny houses.
Thank you. I'm gonna go online next. Elaine Gibbs, you have your hand up. Is that, do you want to speak to this, or was that from before?
Yeah, no, this is now. Thank you. I'm pretty familiar with that piece of land, because if you recall, about five years ago, we had a citizens petition to consider it for the Council on Aging. It's a very odd-shaped lot, as you know, and the terrain is very uneven, and the bike path is, you know, finds a bounder in the back. And if I recall correctly, the footprint on the Council on Aging was about 7,000 square feet total, and then with 40 parking spaces. And it was gonna be potentially tight. I can't imagine 20 units on this, particularly since this is going to be for homeownership. It's one thing if you're renting and you say, well, we've outgrown it, we're gonna leave, or we have no private space, you know, more temporary housing. The, there has to be outdoor space for people. If you had 20 units, you have to have at least 40 cars. You cannot restrict it like they did at 1533, where they said you can only have 1.51, because this is not near anything. Everybody who lives there is gonna need two cars per unit so that they can get around, and it has to be, you know, there with potentially guest parking, because this is homeownership. So people are gonna be looking for different amenities. And if you keep using the term maximize this lot and you overbuild it. And if, if you keep using the term maximize this lot, and you overbuild it, and you try to go to town meeting, and we're going to have to put out money, it's going to get rejected. People did not have a say, much of a say, on 1533. It is overdeveloped, not enough green space, a lot of issues that people are facing now, and they will remember that. And this is in a much more residential area, and I think people don't want the same mistakes made. So I would hope you don't bank on trying to maximize this. I think it should be more conducive, they should look like homes, and that's what I think the people in Chatham, particularly if taxpayers are paying for it, and the people who are going to buy them live in town, I think they have a right to expect that. I don't want to get to the point where we were before, that we got three RFPs and we had to choose one. And it came down to, well, which is the lesser of the three evils? Because nobody was happy with any of them. So I would hope that we don't make the same mistakes we made before. This is homeownership, and it should be done really well, and look like, blend into the neighborhood, not stick out, because that's what the people who are buying them are going to want. And it would be a shame if we found out that nobody in Chatham wanted to live there and pay money to buy a house, and then we end up getting people who are not living and working here, people we're trying to attract. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. John Holburn.
John Holburn, South Chatham, really, I'll be a quickie on this one. When I heard the circular drive and so on, possibly where the circular row in, brought up the idea of that, and trying to maintain houses that look similar and so on, some of the older homes around here obviously went from the street. You see the gable end, the narrow end, so the house goes back. So that way, you could potentially have, I hate to say it, more like mobile home thing, you know, where you have more homes this way and so on, and still doesn't look as dense from the street. So that's just something that could be considered as far as the design, you know, how you...
Yeah.
...configure the, the properties and so on. And I've got, my property in South Chatham, I've got, it's summer cottages, but there's six cottages on one and three quarter acre and so on, and we could easily have put, if we moved them around, we could have easily put at least another four or five on there or so.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Any more public comment?
I think we did get an email in support...
We did?
...of this project. Maybe I did.
Don't recall it.
Yeah. Kathy, it was Civic, I think it was like...
Yes, now I think there was one.
Yeah, there was a resident.
It was kind of a generic...
Yeah, it was a resident of Nob Hill Road, which is across from the project, and he was very excited to see that we were doing something.
General support, yeah.
General support, yes.
All right. I'll bring it back to the board. What does, what does the board want to do? So we have this draft RFP before us. For consideration, we could vote, take a vote tonight, whatever. Stuart, you were first.
Dean, so, help me with the process. We, I'm not ready to vote on this RFP, one. And two, I think it's, it's a good start, but I think that there's still outlining questions, at least that I have, and goals that I'd like to get to that I'm unsure of, one of which is the seasonal communities' issue. So the other issue is, after this RFP is let, what is the process for approval here? The town manager approves the respondents, right? You pick a respondent?
No, I'll designate a review committee, and then they'll go through and rate the respondents, all of them. And it will be as what we did before, where Gloria provided basically a worksheet, and then that committee will make a recommendation to me, and then I make a recommendation to the select board, presuming it would go just to the select board, at a public meeting where we would present the findings of the review committee that's been designated.
Okay, so the...
Your decision after the...
That's, that's where I'm headed.
Yeah, and you might...
Oh, I'm sorry.
You might also go to the trust.
I might go to the trust.
If we want trust money.
Yes, yes, so, but it's, it was a little unique with the Main Street and Meeting House Roads, but it would be my decision, but I have asked the board to endorse my decision so that there's a public vetting. Because as you may recall, 1533 and Meeting House Road, a lot of it took place in executive session by the review committee, and that was comprised of primarily the Affordable Housing Trust, and then I think we had two members, but ultimately, it was presented to the full select board and the trust at a joint meeting. So Gloria and I haven't discussed that in great detail, but certainly we could put the outline together of what the process is and...
I, I think that that would be helpful, Jill, because I don't want to get so far down the road that we, we end up with something we don't want. And I fear that this could be headed that way if we act tonight. So I would ask that we, you know, not too much of a delay, but I think we'll have much better information when we can solidify the seasonal communities. You can give us a written process, because under the Procurement Act, I don't know why you're coming back to the board since, I don't know where that requirement is, unless you're self imposing that on yourself.
Self impose, because it's, it wouldn't be a public process otherwise, and so that's the opportunity.
So, yeah, if we were, if we were able to, if you were able to do that, that would, I think that that would be, at least be helpful to me, and I don't think we're undoing, you know, undo delaying a project that we absolutely have to get right if we're going to get support in the future. Thank you.
Corey, you were first, and then Shereen.
I'll let these guys go first.
My comment's really simple. I mean, for one, I think we should set a minimum, not a maximum. I think we should allow some flexibility. I'm open to that, you know?
No maximum?
No maximum. Because anyone who's paying attention to this knows that they come up with 20...
You might get 25 or 30 units.
Well, if they're going to pay atten, if they pay attention to it and it's poorly designed, then they're going to know they're beating down the, you know, that they're going down the wrong road. I mean, so, but, I mean, so I could go with that. But also, too, from a timing perspective, and Gloria, maybe you want to comment more on this, is the sewer thing is, is a little bit of a kicker in this whole project, because, you know, it's going to impact the finances, the design. It is not a small little element that's, so I don't know how that's going to play, e- even if we were to say, yes, we're going to go with this tonight and move it forward, how that plays out, because that is a significant element to this project. This is my opinion.
So I don't, I don't really know how that's going to play out. So I think that's a really significant element of this project, too. I think that the fact that probably half the site can be sewed right away is a good thing, but I think that depending on how quickly the sewer gets there, and the trust had met with Rob, I can't remember what he said, was it like four years? But I mean...
It wasn't four years, Gloria. It was, I didn't, I didn't think so. I thought it was a two to three year process, which might have aligned right up with the process of the project.
So two to three years would be fabulous, and I think that a developer would probably want to wait for that, if it's reasonable, because, because already they're going to be selling these units at below market, and they're going to be asking the town to contribute, you know, I don't know how much, $300,000 per unit, let's say. But then if you have to add the cost of a pump station onto that, that's something that also would be, you know, end up coming back on the town. Like, the town would end up subsidizing that a little bit, too. Like, there's a lot of questions about how expensive that would be, and, you know, if you can't get market rate for the units, how do you, how do you cover a pump station?
Okay. Jeff? I'd like to move it this evening, and I appreciate Corey's suggestion and Shereen's suggestion about naming a minimum and keeping it open ended. I think that's the right approach, I do. And I also think that when we, if we were to approve this, we need to include that language that you jotted down, Dean, on the seasonal communities, and I don't have the exact language that you articulated, but it was very good. And I think, and I think that ought to be included in the RFP and the appropriate, the appropriate, in the appropriate section. Spent a lot of thought on this, and I really don't want to hold it up, so I'd like to move approval with the caveat that the seasonal communities' language is included, and a minimum of 12 units.
And there were two other things that we talked about. It was adding something about the town's contribution for attainable units, going to town meeting for those funds.
What about the number of units? Are you going to...
I said minimum 12.
Minimum 12 with no cap.
As long as these guys...
That's your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Can I just have discussion? Because I personally would be okay with that, but I know Steward would like to see the process document.
Yeah, I'd like to support it without rushing it. I don't think there's any, I don't think waiting a few weeks is going, in this process, is going to hold us up. But there's still, there's things that we've spoken about here that haven't been solidified in this document or in the process document that we're going to get, that I'd like to be able to see. And I don't think that that's unreasonable to wait. We, you know, we've rushed other projects, and, you know, we're, and I think we can do better this time, and it's...
We're currently scheduled to meet again in two weeks. Is, let me just throw, I'm just trying to be accommodating to everybody on this board, and I articulated where I'm headed. But is there any receptivity to deferring a vote on this for two weeks and get the kind of discussion, a document from the town staff on the process?
And this RFP revised with some of the things that we chatted about.
Well, yeah, I think that's fairly easy to do, I think.
Yeah, I think it can be, I think we can do this within two weeks. And now maybe the, maybe the one thing we haven't decided on, if we could decide on waiting a few weeks, is the, you know, the eight to 12, or eight to 16, or...
Well, I think what the motion is, you said eight?
I said 12.
12, you started with 12, 12 and up. That's up for debate, obviously.
What are the, what are the negatives about a minimum? I mean, if Jeffrey is with 12, and I'm at eight, I don't understand the negatives about going to eight. If there's no negatives about going to 20...
It's just the offering of the supply of housing.
And it was the recommendation of Affordable Housing Trust after doing a lot of vetting on this project, and the 12 was the number. And, you know, I would look at it from that perspective, that there were people in the room that were developers, architects, and had land, land use experience that made that recommendation. The 20 was offered as a cap instead of an open ended, and I think it was simply to be as flexible as possible.
Well, like I said, to begin with, you know, the, the 12 to 20 seems, the 20, 20 is too much, and I think, I don't see the harm in going to eight to 10, understanding where the Affordable Housing Trust landed, I get that, but I, I don't see the negative in that. We can always say no, we can say no to the high end, we can say no to the low end.
And again, I'm going to say, let's not get bogged down on, on the density issue here when, and keeping it flexible.
Well...
You know, because I think the, it will come out in the design, Stuart, how, how that looks, and I think we will be pleasingly surprised by it.
Without becoming argumentative, look what we came up with in West Chatham, and to a lot of people's, a lot of people's thinking is it's too much, and that's what, that's what I'm trying to avoid, so...
I, I'm not going to argue with you on this, but I just, I do disagree...
Okay.
...absolutely with what you're saying.
We're just talking scheduling, I'm sorry.
Well, we have a motion on the table to approve this with the suggested revisions tonight, that's been seconded. I just threw out, in an effort to try to take into account everybody's differing concerns, whether there is any, might be any interest in deferring that vote for two weeks until we, our next meeting, until we get the revised version, which isn't going to have much revision in it, and a document that lays out the process that would have to be put together by the acting town manager and director of housing within that period, if that could be done.
I'm sure it can be done.
But I'd throw that out for the board's consideration. I mean, as far as the minimum, you know, I guess, I'm okay with the 12, because I want ownership housing in this town, and I was very disappointed we didn't get it on the other property. And, you know, I suspect, I'm not a developer, but I suspect that any party that's going to come in here and look at that property is going to want to put more than eight houses there, eight units there. That's just where I'm coming from. So anyway, can I have some feedback from the board on what you'd like to do? Corey, you haven't participated in the motion or the second, so maybe you can...
No, I mean, I mean, yes, I mean, a minimum for my, in my, in a perfect world would be eight. I understand the process. I'm giving 12, because 12 is probably more like closer to my maximum versus my minimum, so I'm willing to work with it to, to see what the, we're going to have good proposals to come out there. We also have a town meeting element that is giving me some, some relief that, you know, we have a sign of a safeguard or something that goes really off track, town meeting is a chance to weigh in on this. So I have some comfort in that. So I'm giving it a little more room than I would normally do, and trying to be, because this is homeownership. I'm, I'm, I'm not going to go into the other projects, but homeownership is desperately needed, so I'm willing to see what we can do with that. So a minimum of 12, and let's see where we can go with it. I'm, I'm open to that right now.
Town meeting has absolute control over...
Yeah.
...the number of units, because they can reject a proposal that we don't like, that they don't like, so...
And you guys can reject proposals, there's a...
Yeah, so I understand that, before it even goes to town meeting, yeah.
Yeah, and every RFP says you can reject them all if you feel like it.
But the ultimate control is, if we want money from town meeting, is they're going to handle it. And I understand, you know, what Ms. Gibbs said earlier, you want to present something that you hope can be passed at town meeting. Well, I guess I'm, I'm going to, unless there's any more comment, there's a motion, I'm going to call, call a vote on it. So the motion was by Mr. Dykens to approve this RFP, which would mean you would make the revisions, Gloria, and you would put it, you would post it on the, the state...
Oh, the central register. Can you guys draft that for me?
Sorry. I'll send you guys a draft after I make the changes, and I'll track them so that you can see what I've done, because I took a lot of notes.
And it goes on the central register?
Yeah.
Is it sent out individually to...
No, so people have to request it specifically, and then Shawna keeps a log of everyone who requests it.
Okay, okay. And then there are revisions that you're making that we have already articulated. So that's, that's the motion on the table, I will call the vote. Mr., Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
No.
And the chair votes aye. So that's four to one. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Next is an item requested by Mr. Smith, review of expired town council contract. Stuart, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Sure, thank you, Dean. So as the memo explains, now I forget how I came across this, but I think I was reading the town council's contract, and it had expired in May, suggesting that the board vote to...
Thank you, Gloria, by the way.
Go to solicitation for interested parties that may want to become town council, interested firms or parties.
So are you looking for, I'm sorry, I missed the last point you made.
I was just, I was just suggesting that the, well, town council's contract has expired, and the board is the appointing board for that position.
Right, right.
And I'm suggesting that we go out for solicitation advertisement to interview and decide who may be our next town council.
And you'd like to do that at the present time, or did you, were you possibly interested in extending this contract or renewing the contract for a period of time?
I don't, I don't, I'm not interested in renewing the contract as written or currently, because there's a provision in there that, you know, we can continue with town council without renewing it. So my, my motion is to put out solicitation so we can get input from various firms and interested parties that maybe want to be Chatham's town council.
So that, you're offering a motion to that effect?
Yep.
Is there a second to that motion? Okay, there's no second. Does anyone have any further comment on this, or?
I did want to say something about the paragraph, it's in the contract, "The parties acknowledge and agree that contracts for legal services may not be for a term of years." The party, parties acknowledge and agree that town council services are subject to an annual appointment or reappointment. It was the first sentence that I questioned Mr. Tallaman about wanting to know where that came from. Under the rules of court that apply to lawyers, lawyers can be discharged at any time. So effectively, there's no term recited in this contract. It was signed at the beginning of this fiscal year, I guess, of the last fiscal year, after we interviewed firms and selected this firm. And because it's subject to an annual appointment or reappointment, that's what you're talking And because it's subject to an annual appointment or reappointment, that's what you're talking about. It's expired because a year has gone by.
Someone had their, was Corey? Yes.
No, I was just going to say, I would not be in favor of doing an extension with like a multi-year contract. I think the language that's in place now makes a whole lot of sense. I think we've had some bumps here and there with some, you know, legal opinions or maybe interpretations. Out of line, making the statement if I am doing, you can shut me down. But I think the current town council has, has been represented by multiple faces in the firm. And the multiple faces, you know, they're directed with different department heads and on various cases and topics that we've had. And in a broader scheme, we're getting, I guess, general good, positive feedback from staff and about the representation we're getting collectively. You know, we may have some issues with certain things, but if I'm misinterpreting my interpretation of, of the response from staff, you know, please correct me, but I'm, I'm getting the impression collectively, we're getting a better or a more positive response from the team. So that's just my interpretation at the moment.
Are there any other comments? I mean, we don't, we don't have a seconded motion, but I'm allowing discussion here.
No, I think it's, I mean, I think what Corey just said is absolutely spot on. That's the feedback I get as well. That the team, Talaman's team, if you will, I won't mention names, but there, we, there are others that, that, that service, the town of Chatham, they've done a really nice job. And, and so has Jay, as Corey also noted, at times, you know, with really good lawyer speak, one wonders where he really stands on issues. However, he frames them really well, both positively and negatively. Frames issues very well. I, I think it's a very cost-effective relationship. I, I like the fee schedule. And I would like to see numbers at some point for, for what we've been charged thus far this year versus other years. And knowing that he can be kind of termed at any time we want, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. I'm, I'm okay with that relationship. And I'm, I'm okay with continuing his continuing service here in town. That being said, I've been frank with him at times and there's always opportunities to have clear communication and a certain degree of frankness with him and he does listen. Thanks. Shereen?
Yeah, the experience the Affordable Housing Trust has had with the representative attorney from that team has been really exceptional. And we've been very satisfied with that. Again, I agree, I agree with what's the general consensus of the board is that we've been very satisfied understanding that we can terminate at any time.
I'm probably a harsher judge on this because I've done this job. And I, I very much appreciated Mr. Costello and that was, he was a one-person operation for most of the time. And I think, I think my only interaction with the current firm has been through Mr. Talaman. I think Lisa Mead has been on a couple of times. And she seems very knowledgeable and Mr. Costello, I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Talaman is a, a very knowledgeable and capable attorney. And I personally, especially since I am in the chair, wouldn't relish a major disruption at the present time. And I'm still getting used to working with, with our new town council. And he is responsive. He's very prompt, very prompt in his responses, which I very much appreciate. And when I have pressed him on a legal point, he has responded to clarify where he's coming from. And that's not just in the form of email communication, but I've had conversations with town council president on things. And he was very helpful. Most recently, the last time we met, when we were discussing the Main Street and, and Middle Road properties. What we have in effect is a contract at will, as it were, employment at will, because of the nature of the rules that apply to legal services. And we can discharge council anytime we want. So I'm inclined to kind of let it go as is. I don't know that we necessarily have to, if we wanted to go in that direction and not adopt Stuart's motion.
I don't know that we have to take a vote to extend the contract a year or do we just let it, let it go as is? What would you?
It's, so with Pat Costello, we, and I didn't bring his contract, we didn't do an annual review, an appointment. But this is a, a contract that me, Talerman and, let's see, I'm sorry, the person. This is their typical contract. So I, if, if it makes something clear to the public that the board has endorsed it, I was just looking for the exact term, section that it had.
Well, I guess we could take a vote that we, we could either do nothing. We could do what Stuart's proposing. We could probably take a vote endorsing the continuation of the services with this firm as per the contract that was signed on June 28th, 2024. Those would be the options I'd throw out.
Was the expiration, do I get the expiration date there?
But it doesn't, it doesn't really say, Stuart, you have to put your, go ahead.
The expiration date on the contract?
But it doesn't say anywhere that it's a year, one-year contract. It just.
It says it expires on May of 2000.
Where does it say that? It says the agreement is effective July 1, 2024. And then you go to paragraph 14. Unless I'm missing something, the parties acknowledge and agree that contracts for legal services may not be for a term of years. That's their language. The parties acknowledge and agree that town council services are subject to an annual appointment or reappointment. So you can interpret that to mean or infer from that, that it, that on June 20, on July, on June 30th, 2025, the contract expired. I think that's where you're coming.
Yeah, it did.
It just doesn't recite it that way, but that I think is your implication, but.
There's very few things that, that the board is mandated to do in the charter. One of them is appoint a town council. The other is appoint a town manager. And that's what I'm suggesting that it, it, at the very minimum, it needs a reappointment.
So my third option was.
Why don't we simply, the board reviewed town council's contract and at this time recommend no, no, no changes to the current contract? Or something as simple as that, you know? So we acknowledge we have an annual review. We're not making any changes.
Upon annual review, the select board.
Recommends no amendments to the current contract.
To make no changes to the contract. Or to continue the contract as is.
That's fine.
Pending an annual, it's pending the next annual review.
Yes, you could add, subject to the next annual review.
That, that's fine. That language is fine here.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Do we have that?
So Kathy is trying to get my attention. So do you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to, there was the question about whether or not you had voted for terms. Apparently Attorney Costello had a three-year term that you was voted, that you voted on May 4th of 2021 for a three-year extension, which would have brought you to the 2024 RFP.
Was there a new contract signed in 2021? I didn't, I didn't know.
I don't believe it was a contract. I think it, let me just get back in there.
He was first hired in 2015 before I got on the board. I think Jeff was on the board. And then there was a renewal in 2018. We, we were asked to vote on that.
Right, that was the term of his contract.
We voted another three years.
And that's what it was. I don't think it was.
Nothing since. So we had two three-year contracts. And then it was just sort of at will, I guess.
Yes.
Okay, well, can we summarize Corey's motion? Do you have that Kathy? It was seconded by Shereen.
Something like maintain the current contract in force.
It's important because it's got all these other terms in it that we want to carry forward. So we have to reference it.
Sorry, the transcript is going a little faster than my typing here.
But we could have a simple vote saying we, a motion to, we, we vote to re, we reviewed the contract and we vote to reappoint this firm as town council according to the terms of the contract signed on June 28th, 2024.
Yeah.
Do you want to?
I'll amend my.
I'll draw my, I'll draw my initial motion.
And I'll second Dean's.
Okay. So we have that. So you don't have to look anymore Kathy. All right. So we have that motion that's on the table right now. It's been seconded.
Yep.
All right, I'll call the roll. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
No.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. Order one. Next item G, discussion on returning to weekly meeting schedules starting September 9th, 2025. This agenda item was also requested by Mr. Smith. Stuart, it's yours.
Thank you. So I, when I was new to the board, I think you folks, I think we, we voted for a summer schedule. You know, I think in the real world, summer schedules end around now, Labor Day, and not into the middle of October, end of October. We have a lot of issues in front of us. I think we'd have more time for discussions like the affordable housing discussion we just had that I think was rushed. I think we'd have more time for discussion when it comes to town council services. We, the evaluation process was mentioned here, but I must have missed it because I didn't see the evaluation process. So, and we, we, for good or bad, we deep six some, a lot of agenda items that were old and people were offered to come forward if they, if they wanted to, you know, bring them back to the board. But it seems to me, and we have budget season coming up, and I think it's important that we go back to a weekly schedule. And that's my motion.
That's a motion?
Yep.
And is there a second to that? Does anyone want to have any discussion on the topic? Mr. Matters?
No, a couple of things. I know when we set the summer schedule, I think we've always been very clear that if things come up, that we will absolutely have extra meetings. That's never, I don't think any of this, we've ever balked at that. So if there's something that needs to be done, you know, going back earlier than, than what we have, doesn't bother me. I'm happy to, you know, go back earlier. You know, part of me also is happy to have a couple of extra breaks because, you know, to speak from a personal perspective, I know, one, if we start next, the 9th, I'm out of town. I've already booked a flight and I'm moving one of my kids down to Florida for, you know, the, the fall. So I physically won't be here. So if that's the decision, you know, I will miss that one. You know, I, I, you know, I'm a small business owner. I still got another six, six weeks at least. I go, so whatever, whatever, you know, if we do weekly, if we go back to weekly meetings, whatever, I'm indifferent about it. I do want to take an opportunity that if we, with the board, would entertain making the meetings at 5:30 until after we get through Columbus Day weekend, that would be greatly appreciated. But I will work with, I've, I've worked with whatever parameters we've had in the past. I will continue to do that. But if I, if I were, I'm looking for some relief myself. So I'll just throw that out for, for conversation.
Shereen?
I'm, I'm in Corey's camp. You know, we're the two working stiffs on the board and, you know, it's, you know, we should, we've made a lot of accommodations and adjustments to, to make the meetings and, and, and when I, I'm fine with the five or 5:30. I can be more flexible, I think, than, than Corey can. He's, you know, he's got hourly staff, hourly hours for, for store. I think, and, and I agree, that it's based on the idea that if there's a hefty schedule or some, things are coming up, we're always moving in and filling in the gaps of those, those weeks that we have as optional. And I think we can run, I think Deans run a fairly efficient, pretty efficient meetings. And, you know, I don't feel rushed.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's how.
Any other comment? I just want to offer a couple. I, the, when we referred to the term summer schedule, June was not part of the summer schedule. We had meetings every week in June. And, you know, I just think it's important to point out to the, to the public what select board members do. It isn't, we don't just show up here once a week, having picked up the packet. And I know that's true of everybody on this board and everybody I've served with on this board. And especially if you're in the chair. It's, there are daily responsibilities, whether it's special meetings. And we had, I think, an interview session, a long interview session for two hours in one week that was so-called off week. I have a weekly meeting with the town manager to plan the agenda. And I know other members of this board regularly meet with the town manager. There are numerous communications that come in, emails, phone calls. And, you know, those don't respect the weekend either. So, you know, I think board members put in a full commitment to this, to this responsibility once we're elected. And I, I, I guess I'm, I'm very comfortable with the current schedule. I understand what Stuart is saying. We have had occasions in the past where we had a summer schedule and we had to call an emergency meeting for some reason or another. Doesn't happen very often, but we can always do that. And, you know, I guess I'm of the view that almost nothing is so urgent that it can't wait. Maybe others will disagree with that, but that's the way government works. And always will work, I think, at any level. So that's kind of my, my feeling about it. I appreciate Stuart bringing it forward for, for discussion. And, you know, we can always think about it again next year when, when the board decides what it wants to do for next summer. So I guess we had a motion, but there was no second. So we'll go on to the next item. Thank you, Stuart. Next is to consider amending the select board meeting public participation policy. This was requested by board member Matters, who's been on this issue for some time. And we will accept public comment after the board. Corey, I'll turn it over to you. I know there's a document in the file that you worked on with Kathy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make this extremely brief because this is not a new topic for discussion. I very much appreciate you putting this on the agenda. Safe to say that philosophically, I kind of have a slightly different opinion on how we deal with public participation. You know, there's, you know, to date, four of us have served as chairman. We've had the privilege of running these meetings, the, you know, the, the, the elements of having to organize and, you know, on this on a regular basis, we've gone through regular meetings. We've gone through COVID. I mean, Ms. Davis guided us through COVID, through all kinds of turmoil. That was a task in itself. I mean, so we've, we've, we've gone through a lot of elements over the years. And I just think that having public participation with a back and forth dialogue has some benefits. You know, sometimes on these longer agenda meetings, you know, we go to public comment and then we'll have four, five, six items come forward. You know, we may take notes, you know, we may not get a full kind of sense of where the conversation was going to. Someone's comments may, you know, half hour later, I could have another question that really procedurally can't go back and hey, you know, Mr. Smith, you know, can you give me more response to that? And so I just think from my own personal opinion, after serving on this board since 2015, that when we were, when I was first on this board, there was a more, more back and forth dialogue. And I found that to be beneficial to both myself and to the, and to the public's perception of what to expect when coming to these meetings. So I throw it out there. You know, I've obviously been passionate about this. I've brought it up a couple, one, two, seven times. So I swear, this is the, the last time I will ever mention it, but I just want to, you know, put it up for consideration. But I do think it's important for the public to, to have this type of engagement from the board. So.
Any other comments from the board? Shereen?
Yeah, I just wanted to clear that Corey, the, the changes that I'm seeing in this participation policy are your recommendations.
Correct.
And most of them are based on the option for the, to be the discretion of the chair.
I, I solely feel the chair should have discretion on, yes.
And I agree. And we have the opportunity for consent calendar if, if we find that to be optional. I, I under, you know, I'm, I'm fine with the changes going forward. I was fine the way the process was this way too, because you simply were at the discretion of the chair, putting together opportunities for people to weigh in on some of the matters that we needed a lot of feedback on. And I also remind people that we receive emails. We do have conversations. we do have conversations on the phone, we do see people in public. This is not the only venue that we hear about an issue or an agenda item. So I just want to remind people that this isn't, you know, this isn't the only place that we receive feedback from it. This is a more public place for people. So I think that oftentimes we hear a lot of, from a lot of the same people, a lot. And, you know, I just want to make note that we do hear from others as well, in other ways.
Okay. Any other comment? Jeff?
Yeah, I, you know, I'm the opinion that if it ain't broke, don't fix it. But, you know, we've, we've heard repeatedly from our voting public that, you know, they want to weigh in on issues, you know, aren't allowed, if you will. Although I do believe that Mike Shell and Deana Castro and have done a wonderful job of allowing public comment on those issues and items that are deserving, and I've galvanized, or that the public is really interested in. But I'm okay with this, and, and it's a little bit of a turn for me. What gets me going a bit is the repetition of some of the folks that come to the mic. I would just ask that the chair be circumspect with respect to his or her time limits on folks that, that are repeating what has already been said by another, by another, by another speaker. I don't think this is going to be that, that big a change, to be honest with you. I went through our, our agenda here this evening. I, I don't know who would oppose or be a way in on, I mean, anyway, I won't go through the list. But I think, for example, tonight, we picked Dean arrayed the exact correct items that we're going to have public comment, and we had public hearings as well. I do have a, I do have an issue on the consent agenda that if I might, Mr. Chairman, bring up, although it's not specific.
Well, it's in, it's in the document. It's in the document, so you can talk on it.
I would like to save some time by proposing thus. If a petitioner, citizen's request, petitioner comes forward and is requesting to use town facilities and/or entertainment license, or whatever the law allows us to do, if they've been before, before, and we have approved that item before, I would like the chair, working with Kathy and Sean and the town manager, to be able to at least place those on a consent agenda that we review, and then we can pluck those items from the consent, consent agenda off if we want to. But if we've approved it before, and there are no changes, we're wasting their time and ours, kind of. I say that respectfully. Now, that being said, if the petitioner or the citizen's request wants to have a public, wants to present in the public, then we allow them to do so. But I think, I think it would save us a little bit of time once in a while to rearrange our consent agenda, be more thoughtful about what is placed in front of us, that we sit here and listen and go, we know we're going to vote yes. I mean, you know, we know we're going to vote yes. Anyway, I'd like to put that forward.
So if there's sentiment from the board, when we take a vote on this, we could have Kathy draft that, insert that type of thing, but.
I think that, I, I feel pretty strongly.
Okay. I'm okay with that myself.
I'm okay with that. I do find, sometimes it's really, you know, I, I, I think that a lot of people would be very relieved that they wouldn't have to present multiple times. I also, I'll get it from another end, that this is a time when people can, you know, bring their community ideas forward and let people hear them. So I'd leave that option up to be a collaborative.
Absolutely.
All right. Any other comments from the board? Stuart, did you have anything?
No.
My only, my comment is, I'm fine with this. I voted for the change some years ago. I indicated more recently that I would be amenable to making the adjustment that Cory has proposed. I think the language is fine. I think there is inherent in the, and I base this on a communication I had with town council, that Jill was party to, that the chair can inherently limit or restrict repetitive comment. So I don't think we need to insert anything in here on that. But the only substantive change, I, I think this reflects what we've been doing largely anyway. It's been in the discretion of the chair, no matter who's been in the chair. We are reducing the time per speaker at five to three, and I'm very supportive of that, because there are times when we've had people speak, and they repeat. You know, they're saying the same thing two or three times. And I've, I think we've all let folks go on, but, you know, I don't know that that's particularly helpful if you're just saying the same thing two or three times. So I'm okay with that. And with that, I'm going to turn to public comment. Mr. Hallgren, and then we have a couple on the screen.
John Hallgren again. Yeah, and obviously, as somebody who tries to make these things extremely brief, because, you know, I follow, try to follow Norma Avalar, where basically she said something in 30 seconds, and I did somebody that spent five minutes. So the thing that I like being able to public comment is, sometimes when you guys come up with a proposed motion, sort of like the, well, what about, you know, sort of from my career as a computer programmer, debugging, you know, finding the, finding maybe a glitch or something like that, and, you know, bringing that to your attention. I think sometimes I've been able to do that, and I think that was something I really missed the opportunity to do for a few years there. The other thing, as far as the three minutes, could we maybe get like a digital countdown clock and put it over there?
We can have one on the screen.
No, but I'm saying there would be, it may be on the screen, but basically for people here, so we could see it there, you know?
Well, we can get into that. I, I'm inclined, there it is.
Right, but, but, you know, I'm saying is that I'm, I'm tend to look at you, so if there was a way to have that, something over there.
We could look into that. And my inclination would be to put that clock on at a, at a public hearing, rather than general. I don't, I don't want us, people feel overly restricted.
Oh, true.
You know, we, we can watch the time.
It was something that, that, you know, because if I'm somebody speaking, they may not know what the, what the time is.
No, I hear you. In response to your earlier, earlier point, I think that was the concern that people were voicing, that until they heard from select board members how we felt about a particular issue, they wanted an opportunity to comment on that after that fact, and that's, they felt that the current policy didn't allow for that. But thank you.
Right, or, or proposed motion, and then you go, well, wait a second, you, did you think about such? So, thank you.
Nicole Stern, I think you were next.
Good evening. Nicole Stern here. I want to once again express my support for, oops, public comment on agenda items. I strongly believe that citizens should have genuine access to the process of town government. While we select select board members to represent us, we still expect to have the right and responsibility to participate in meetings in a meaningful way, so that we listen to the presentation of an issue, hear your comments, and then ask relative questions or provide our own comments in context, all followed by your vote. I hope you'll consider voting for these changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Elaine Gibbs?
Yes. Now, I'm, I'm a little unclear on what Cory's motion was. Are you saying that all agenda items we will be able to comment on?
Yes, yes. I mean, the operative language, it was in the packet. I don't know if you've seen it. It says, this is the opening sentence under the public comments section of the current policy with the revisions. Contemporary public comments will be allowed on agenda items at the discretion of the chair, with the exception of committee appointments, personnel issues, or items the chair deems exempt.
Okay, so I assume that at the discretion of the chair, that we can assume that we're going to be able to speak. Because the problem is, we don't know until the agenda packet comes out, when we're going to be allowed to speak. And it's very difficult preparing for the meetings, when there's, you know, 300 pages in.
Well, I think the assumption, I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't intend to interrupt you. Elaine, please continue, Elaine. I'm sorry. I was going to say something.
Okay. I just want you to understand that this isn't just the public, you know, telling the board how they feel. A lot of people watch, and they want to hear other people speaking. There are a lot of people that are intimidated. They don't want to come. They don't want to be embarrassed. They don't want to be cut off. They don't want to wait. They've got to feed their kids, whatever.
Yeah.
So not just talking to you, and you meeting people in the grocery store. It's a method of getting the information out to people from the members of the public. And again, it's our money that's being spent, and I think we have a right to, to weigh in on that. These packets are really huge. They are overwhelming, and, you know, there's a lot of preparation going into it. So I would have recommended, I like the idea that you will listen to the public before you actually take a vote, or a motion, or deliberate, like the zoning board of appeals does. I think it works very well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think there's a presumption here that the chair is going to allow public comment, but, you know. Okay. I didn't see any more public comment. Yeah, we do need to take a motion, and I, I assume the motion would be to approve Mr. Matters' recommendation with the addition of the consent agenda revisions that Mr. Dykens proposed. And if there is a motion to that effect, I'll entertain it.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And Kathy, you have that, and so, so the intention would be, do we vote this tonight, or do we want to see the draft of that additional language? I don't think there's a need. I think it was pretty clear.
I'm fine. I'm clear with it.
All right. Motion made and seconded. I'll call the roll. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. Okay. Now we have committee appointments. Let me just get my paperwork here. There are several. The first is to appoint the historical commission representative to the community preservation committee. For a long time, it was Stephanie Hamilton. They are now recommending Nancy Barr, who's a full member of the historical commission, to the community preservation committee. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Nancy Barr as a historical commission representative to the community preservation commission until June 30th, 2028, unless sooner revoked or successor is appointed.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. I'll call the roll on that. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The next is the taxation aid committee. So we have interviewed, as recently as tonight, six candidates in total. This is the brand-new committee that we approved recently. The, the candidates were Seth Taylor, Stephen Daniel, Richard Mack, Mary Hilliard, Anne Marie Litchfield, Thomas Campbell. I would say, with respect to Mr. Daniel, and the material was in the packet for the interviewing session, because he's a member of the finance committee, there was a legal question that I put to town council as to whether he would be eligible. Under the still-existing bylaw, he's technically not eligible until probably tomorrow. The attorney general has approved the amendment to the bylaw that town meeting adopted, which still bars a member of the finance committee from serving on a standing committee, but opens it up to other types of committees. Town council advised that Mr. Daniel would be eligible under this particular bylaw. So if there were sentiment to appoint him, I would suggest that the vote of appointment be conditioned on the final posting by the town constable of the bylaw approval by the attorney general. The other point I want to make is that the statute just says three, three at-large seats. Two members are dictated by statute. One is the chair of the board of assessors, and the other is the town treasurer. And there are three at-large members, and Kathy has suggested, since we typically do stagger appointments, that there be one appointment for one year, one appointment for two years, one appointment for three years, but these would all be three-year terms eventually. So with that, I'm, I'm going, I will say I was impressed with all the candidates. So I would ask, she's proposing an initial appointment to June 30th, 2026. We can do whatever we want. We can appoint them all for three years right now. But what's the sentiment of the board? Cory?
I'd be open to three years, to be honest with you.
For everybody?
Yeah, I would.
So they would all expire in three years?
And then we start staggering, you know, but.
Okay. Any other comments on that?
Yeah, I agree.
That makes it easy.
It does.
All right. There's any, unless there's objection, we'll go for a three-year term to June 30th, 2028. Some of us might not be on the board back then, then, but go ahead. Mr., I don't know who was first. Stuart, I think you were first. Go ahead.
Sure, I'll, I move to nominate Seth Taylor as a member at large of the taxation aid committee until June 30, 2026, unless.
You're going to make 28.
28.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, you're right. 28, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Second.
Second, yeah. That's seconded. Okay, we'll call the roll. Any other nominations? Well, we're going to have three positions, so they're all the same. Ms. Davis?
Abstain.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So it's 4-0-1.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move Stephen Daniel, I move to nominate Stephen Daniel as a member at large in the taxation aid committee until June 30th, 2028, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed, with the caveat that we get approval by, of his legally being able to be appointed by the attorney general.
I'll second that.
Okay, so, all right. We'll call a roll, call a roll. Did you have a question, Mr. Matters?
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
So. We can take other nominations if you want. We didn't done the first one, but we could.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to nominate Thomas Campbell as a member at large until 2028.
Is, is there a second?
I'll second it for the sake of second.
It's been seconded. Any other nominations? So we have Mr. Daniel, subject two, and, and Mr. Campbell. And I'll call the roll, just indicate whom you vote for. Ms. Davis?
Mr. Daniel.
Mr. Dykens?
Mr. Daniel.
Mr. Matters?
Thomas Campbell.
Mr. Smith?
Stephen Daniel.
And the chair votes Stephen Daniel. So he's appointed for a three-year term. We have one position left, and these are all to 2028.
Right.
And is there a nomination?
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Anne Marie Litchfield, move to nominate Anne Marie Litchfield as a member at large on the taxation aid committee until June 30th, 2028, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Second.
All right. Any other nominations for this position? I will say, the, the language in the motions was to nominate, but we're actually appointing.
Appointing. I, I move to appoint Anne Marie Litchfield.
All of them. So, no other nominations, so nominees, so Anne Marie Litchfield has been moved. I'll call the roll. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Ms., Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So the nomin, so the appointees are Seth Taylor, Stephen Daniel, Anne Marie Litchfield, all until June 30th, 2028, unless a successor, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. Next, we'll move on to the cultural council. And we have two nominees that we've interviewed, right? Alice Bartram, whom we interviewed today, and Jennifer Jones, not the actress, but Jennifer Jones. And these terms, two terms run until June 30th, 2027. One runs through June 30th, 2028. So I don't know what you'd like to do. We can nominate one to 2028 and one to 2027. So I'll ask for nominees for one of the two positions, wherever you want to do it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I'd like to move to appoint Alice Bartram for the term that runs through June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All right. Any other? Is there another nominee for that particular position? Okay, we'll call the roll on that. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, we have, the next position goes to June 30th, 2027.
Nominate Jennifer Jones.
Second.
And that's been named and nominated and seconded, moved and seconded. I'll call the roll. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And the last is the airport commission. And we had an interviewee, Peter Farber, was interviewed on August 19th. There is one vacant seat currently with a, an unexpired term running through June 30th, 2026. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Peter Farber as a member of the airport commission until June 30, 2026, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All right, I'll call the roll. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So we now have full complement on the airboard commission.
Is there, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, I was going to ask that. All right. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We are adjourned at 8:52 PM, 7:52 PM.